See, everybody please stand and rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
All right, with that, we wanted to go to number two and talk about changes to the order of the agenda. We have had a request from the public to try to move item 11A up. And is there any problem from staff's point of view or council's point of view if we move that after item seven?
We have no issue with that, no.
Is that okay? Counsel? Okay, is that all right? All right, well then we will move officially item 11A to be just after item seven tonight. Are there any other requests for changes to the order of the agenda? All right, we will move on to a report from closed session.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Landzone, and then we'll move on to number four, Council Communications and Announcements. Councilmember Gropka.
Sure. I'm not sure if the whole council's been receiving these or if I've just been getting them to my mailbox or not, but quite a few emails considering the few number of homes impacted regarding the Holly Street widening and the residents that are being impacted are concerned about, A, the timing of it, and being that it seems to be coming pretty quickly and at one point there seems to be there some correspondence indicating that this project was out into the future quite, quite a bit. And secondly, the safety that is, or the lack thereof that might be left once the street is widened and folks are left with shorter driveways and so forth. So I was wondering if we might be able to, as a council, request staff to give us a little bit more of a thorough presentation on this. A lot of times we don't get the plans and specifications on these projects. We're told we can come in and look at them in the city clerk's office. But if there's some way that we can agendize this item, if it would be the mayor's pleasure to do that, and take a closer look at what is, what the plans are and perhaps look at some of these safety issues that some of the homeowners are talking about.
It's not a, yeah, decision I'd make on my own, council. We can talk about it. We certainly could all request more information. City Commissioner Weiss, do you want to answer?
We've been sharing information with the affected residents. We'd be happy to bring that information forward as a report to council.
Great. Counsel, support that?
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Anything else? Councilmember Gropka?
No reports this week, Mr. Mayor.
Nor do I. So we will move on to number five, which is a presentation. Oh, I guess I should, Councilmember Gropka's reminded me to remind everybody's hometown days this weekend. And of course I should remember that because I finally get to ride in a car.
That's right.
Which is exciting. So the, yeah, a little one.
Yeah.
So hometown day starts this Friday, Friday night, runs through Saturday and Sunday. There's a fun run on Sunday. I know I'll be out there. Councilmember Ramon?
I will be there.
There's a big animation.
Yeah, but I'm not racing.
No, I'm not racing.
And there is a pancake breakfast on Sunday, isn't there?
I'm just gonna watch. Anyway, everybody please get out and enjoy hometown days this weekend. It's, it's one of our truly great weekends that separates San Carlos from so many other communities. All right, presentation, a proclamation supporting National Police Week. National Police Week is May 15th through 21st, and Peace Officer Memorial Day, May 15th, and the San Mateo County Peace Officer Memorial Day, May 4th, 2008.
You've got that right underneath.
Great. And do you want me to, is anybody here that we see it?
Chief Prosser's here.
Good.
So let me read just a bit of this. Whereas Peace Officer Memorial Day and National Police Week were first established by John F. Kennedy through a presidential proclamation in 1960 to commemorate all law enforcement officers who had given their life in the line of duty. And whereas since 1960, Peace Officer Memorial Day has been observed on May 15th, and the week in which Peace Officer Memorial Day falls has been proclaimed as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers willingly perform hazardous duties to protect and defend their community and are too often called upon to sacrifice their lives in guarding our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council and the city of San Carlos recognize the week of May 12th as National Police Week, the day of May 15th is Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 4th is San Mateo County Peace Officer Memorial Day, and calls upon all citizens to pay tribute to those peace officers who have given their ultimate sacrifice while protecting their communities. The date of this 12th, this date of May. I'm Mayor Lewis. Thank you very much.
All right, and with that we'll move on to item number six, which is public comment. And this is persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda with a two-minute speaking time limit. Do we have any speaker slips tonight? All right, with that we will move on from item number six to item number seven, which is the approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are just considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request special items to be removed for separate action. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of consent calendar item 7A, B with the change of Councilman Royce abstaining from his, the 6C vote last time. 7C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
Second? Kristi?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropka?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce is absent. Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And with that, we motor right on to item number 11A, which is consideration of amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 6.04.310A, keeping of domestic fowl and rabbits.
How are you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Did you say rabbits or rats?
Rabbits. I said rabbits, but I, I listen to you, I hear rat. I don't know why.
Hopefully he's referring to the movie. Yeah.
For the council tonight for its consideration is an amendment to the city code that would allow the keeping of four domestic fowl, or rabbits, a combination of four, total of four, however someone were want to do that. At present, the city code does not provide for the keeping of domestic fowl. Code was changed about five or six years ago to eliminate that. The only of the, the, we have a request and we attach opposite petitions and I call here tonight to change the city code and allow up to four chickens or rabbits or any combination similar to the proposal that's in the ordinance for your consideration. We looked at the other cities that surround us and that's in your staff report and we go from everything from Foster City, which doesn't allow any fowl to be kept, to City of Belmont, which appears that you can have all the way up to 20 of one of the others. Each of the cities that does allow the keeping of domestic fowl or rabbits do provide conditions under which the animals would be kept. Staff is proposing in the ordinance for your consideration that up to four domestic fowl or rabbits would allow to be kept in any combination. Animals cannot run at large, that they must be kept in a cage or a coop, at least 35 feet from the, another dwelling or the street, which is similar to about every other city we looked at. Enclosures must be clean and free of offensive odors, that there be no roosters, and that no offensive noise or disturbing the peace and quiet of the neighborhood would arise from the keeping of the animals, which is similar from something in the Menlo Park code. If I had to answer any questions, I'm sure there are members of the public that would like to speak.
Counsel, any questions? I just have one, and that's the practicality of the 35-foot wall that seems to apply to any other residence, so.
Would mean you could not have, for example, in the, in the front yard, it would prevent the keeping of the animals in a front yard.
Mm-hmm.
And 35 feet from another residence, I suppose even on a 40-foot lot that has a four-foot setback, it would be tight, but you could probably do something in the middle of your backyard.
Yeah, that's.
And not all lot, one of the reasons we didn't have this in our ordinance before or took it out was the fact that. There had been some problems, especially on the smaller lots like in White Oaks. There are just not large lot provisions that would allow the animals to be kept without disturbing the neighborhood.
So is that 35 feet from your own residence as well as?
No.
Oh, okay, then that, all right.
Although, Mr. Landzone, it seems to imply that because it says any dwelling.
We can change that to adjacent dwellings.
Okay. You know, it seemed to me to be your own house, so.
Okay. Have you guys requested we make that change?
I would, I would, because it's ambiguous right now. It sort of implies that you can't even keep within 35 feet of your own house if we pass this, if there's any dwelling.
Now, that said, were there any health and public safety issues with, you know, if you needed to have, say, a chicken coop in order to meet the ordinance relative to adjacent homes, can you do it, you know, if it's that close to your own home, do you have a health and safety issue?
Well, if the, hopefully there wouldn't be any health and safety issue anyway because the coop or would be clean. It's, it's question of noise, so I would imagine if you're gonna allow to have the keeping of chickens, for example, then that's a noise that you would accept. Maybe not a noise that your neighbors would want to accept.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we'll have, I have one public speaker slip on this item. If anybody else would like to speak on this item, you're welcome to fill out a slip or you can purchase a podium and fill out a slip right after you're done speaking. And I believe it's Anya Knopf? Am I close? Please come and sit down. And don't be nervous.
Probably some of you had chickens or rabbits when you were younger. We would also like to have that chance. A lot of people came to support the changing. Everybody who came to support, please stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anybody else in the public like to speak to council on the item? All right, great. Counsel, discussion.
I was just gonna say, I spent a lot of time on 4H and on Honeywag in detail, so I know what you guys are up for. Enjoy. I guess I'll make a motion. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for the introduction of ordinance number?
1398.
An ordinance for the city of San Carlos amending the municipal code, adding Section 6.04.310 Alpha, keeping of domestic fowl and rabbits, and changing Section B from any dwelling to adjacent dwelling.
Second? Kristi?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropka?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. No roosters? No rats. Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to item 8A, which is a report, counsel, an update on safe routes to schools. Mr. Mayor, before we start on that, if anybody in the audience would like to leave, we'd appreciate it if you'd leave before we start new items as opposed to in the middle of some items. So I'm not trying to get rid of you, but I thought you might want to go. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Taking over, you know.
I fully realize that. Maybe they'd stick around, maybe they'd learn something about safe routes to schools.
They might, but, you know, who knows? Go ahead, run the meter however you like, just let me know. I'm over here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sorry? The Safe Route to School Committee was established by a group of parents, some members, principals of some of the schools, members of PTA, and they established this committee to look at the different issues, especially the finding, the problems that children have to walk to school or bike to school and come up with suggestions of improvements. Staff had a meeting with some members of the committee in January, and after that the committee requested that they'll make a presentation to Transportation and Circulation Commission, and they had a PowerPoint presentation, and that presentation was made to the commission at their scheduled meeting of March 18th. And the members of the commission felt that the same presentation should be made to city councils, so the council members will come aware of that. By the same time, the Transportation and Circulation Commission established two goals for their 2008, 2009 fiscal year, and two of the tasks was, one was to establish and develop working relationship with the Safe Route to School Committee, and the other one was to review, evaluate possibility of a need for a transportation plan for entire San Carlos Avenue corridor. So the commission will be working on those two projects starting in July. And the committee, the request that, and the commission agreed, that Safe Route to School Committee should make the same presentation to city council, and Ms. Marie Camenzin, a member of the committee, is present to, present to you the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me come here tonight to give you this presentation. My name is Marie Camenzin. I'm the coordinator for Safe Routes to School, and I'm just going to give you a brief presentation. How can we help you tell about our program, rebuild our goals and plans, improve our progress today, identify some retired support? And explain how you could possibly help us. What is Safe Routes to School? Safe Routes to School is an interaction movement that has taken hold in communities throughout the United States. The concept is to increase the number of children who walk from at school by setting targets that we're in the areas that are pretty few that spend from doing so. Okay. And why is Safe Routes important? Well, 30 years ago, 60% of children were walking and biking within a two-mile radius. Today, that number has dropped to less than 15%. The need, our routes to school are seen as dangerous. Fewer kids are biking and walking, which means more parents are driving. And we have also health concerns. Childhood obesity is on the rise in America. Childhood asthma rates are on the rise. Pollution is a known trigger. Experts are predicting that this is the first generation where we may outlive our children. And I'm hearing that statistic more and more. I work in healthcare and we're hearing that a lot more these days. There's also environmental concerns such as global warming and the rising cost of fuel. What are the main barriers? We took surveys at all the seven San Carlos schools. We compiled all that information, asked who was walking, who was not, and if you were not, why weren't you? The top reason for children not walking to school was traffic danger, difficult to cross busy streets, lack of sidewalks, lack of crossing guards, or the commute was just too far. I have copies of the surveys in the back of the room, and I have copies of our key problems that the schools came up with as well, and you can grab those on your way out. Safe Routes to School programs are part of the solution. It can improve walking and bicycling conditions, which increase physical activity and decrease air pollution. This is a group of children walking to school to Britton Acres. Let's take a look at one mother's options when she's walking her children to school. Safe Routes to School, Katie and Jessica's options. Jessica goes to preschool at Edison, and Katie goes to school at Arendal. This, I'm sorry about the map, it's kind of hard to see, but I'll help you out. This is San Carlos Avenue, Edison, Tara Linda's here, and Arendal there. Katie would like to walk to school more often, but her parents worry about her safety. We can safely get to the corner of Devonshire and San Carlos Avenue. Sometimes there are cars blocking the sidewalks and pathways, but we can walk around them. They go down Devonshire, I'm trying to use my pointer, Devonshire. They go down San Carlos Avenue, and then they can cross right here at the lower parking, the lower crosswalk to the lower parking lot. But that crosswalk has no stop sign, red light, or other indicator to assist in stopping traffic for young pedestrians. Their second route is to go across San Carlos Avenue and go down this side of San Carlos Avenue into the lower parking lot. Unfortunately, there are substantial numbers of cars turning right that do not see them. These cars line up here, they're looking for oncoming traffic coming this direction, and oftentimes they do not yield to pedestrians. This photograph breaks my heart. I know this little girl, Katie Emerson. My daughters went to Edison with her, and just the mere fact knowing that she has to walk into oncoming traffic on San Carlos Avenue on a busy morning just to get around this truck just to get to school breaks my heart. The third favorite route is to cross San Carlos Avenue, go up Devonshire, well, it becomes Wellington, and then they can go in the upper parking lot to Arendal. As you can see, there are no sidewalks. Cars coming here are usually going speeding, going faster than normal, they're headed to work, usually coffee in hand, on the cell phone. Again, children are forced to walk in the street. Safe Routes to School, in theory, we could cross San Carlos Avenue, they can come down and go up Arendal Road, but we have the same situation except for this road is busier, narrower, curvier. Again, no sidewalks, children have to walk in the street to get to school. On nice days, they can take the bike, dropping off Katie at Arendal and then heading up to Edison. They have a bike lane till they get about here, then they have no bike lane. This mother would be very happy if there was one. Once they get to here, if they can get there before 7:50, it's pretty safe, but if they get there between 7:50 and 8:15, it's quite unsafe. And I'll show you why. This is San Carlos Avenue, usually has about 15 cars lined up. As you can see, there's no bike lane. Then she turns here onto Dartmouth. Again, the sidewalk ends right here, and no bike lane, so if you can imagine Katie and Jessica in their little bike cart trying to squeeze in here. This is the one and only entrance to a campus that has three schools in it. You have no sidewalks, the only way you can get into this school, well, you can go on foot, but it's not safe, but it's by automobile. So you have three schools entering around the same time by automobile into this one area. Excuse me. So we can make a difference by making it safer for kids like Katie and Jessica, by offering a chance for children to improve their health and their physical condition, by offering solutions to families who live far, like carpool incentives, we've already done that, or a community transit system, or by improving the, and by improving the air quality in San Carlos, keeping it the city of good living. Other benefits of Safe Routes, like I said before, less traffic, helps establish pedestrian skills, leads to change in mindsets and lifestyles, savings on the gas bill, and bringing our community together. So what are the main goals? Well, where it's safe, we get our children walking and biking to school, and where it's not safe, we need to make the changes. The strategies to get there, through education, encouragement, engineering, fixing our infrastructure enforcement, by getting police officers out there and ticketing those cars illegally parked, economics through Safe Routes grants, through city planning and budgeting, and evaluation through our surveys. Our accomplishments so far, we started back in October of this year, and so far we've formed our community, our committee. This is a group of people walking to Arendal Elementary on our Walk to School Day. We form committees at each of our seven schools. We receive support from the top superintendent, all the way down to the children. We know the children are supporting this because they definitely love their Walk to School Day. We conducted surveys and came up with our key problem areas. There's copies of those in the back of the room. I hope you can all take a copy and look it over. It's basically each school what they came up for their biggest problem areas. Education, we've been doing a lot of education, parent education, student education through safety handouts and brochures. We had San Carlos PD come down and talk about safe bicycling, safe walking to school. We've brought awareness to the benefits of walking and biking through our school newspaper, our principal's newsletters from, through e-notification. We've attended many, many meetings through newsletters, brochures, local newspapers, and the news stations. When we did our district-wide Walk to School Day, we were on probably, well, we were on the morning, noon, and evening news on six different news stations. We implemented a walkly, a monthly district-wide walk, bike, or carpool to school day. We are calling this San Carlos Days, and on our first time, we had up to 85% participation at most of the schools. We have walking school buses already in action. This is a map showing where, each blue dot is where a group of parents and children will meet, and departing times listed below. Two plus two committee has agreed to make Safe Routes a priority for future discussions, and our last accomplishment is that we are here asking you for your help. What we plan to do moving forward, we would like to establish a long-term working relationship with the city to move forward on our program elements. We know this isn't a quick job, it will probably take several years, and we want to start a working relationship with you. We want to work with Public Works on our key problems, apply for federal grants on the schools' behalf. The schools can apply for the federal grants and the city as well. We would like to coordinate with the city and hopefully get help from the city with cost estimates, et cetera, so we're better candidates. Give input to the city for future state and federal grants. We want you guys to have input from the schools, what we feel are the needs. And we would support and endorse any community transit proposal that helps take cars off the road, making it safer, and would provide a solution for children who live too far. There was a SCOOP initiative on the ballot a few years back. I personally did not vote for it. It was a different time. I didn't have children in the school system. I didn't realize the routes to our schools were, were so dangerous. Gasoline did not cost $4 a gallon, and we didn't worry about global warming back then. I think it's a different time now. And last but not least, implement a crossing guards program. That's something that we really need in this city. This is an organizational structure. It's not set in stone. It's something that we look at, that we could look at and hopefully get to someday, but we have our committee up here, the different schools, and the different reps from each school. The city of San Carlos, we have engineering on board with this. They've helped us with some education. I got some stuff from Parks and Rec that we gave out in our goodie bags on Walk to School Day. We need more enforcement of parking violations. Let's see, crossing guards program, we would love to have some help on that. I'm thinking maybe a volunteer program, but if it was under the city, it would probably be a lot more successful. We can get our seniors and our parents, we could be covered under our school district insurance, and I think together we could probably come up with a pretty good plan. Walking school buses are in action, Walk to School Day is in action, other programs, crossing guards, all under our project teams. So what do we need? We would like the city manager to become a single point of contact for us. We would like the city manager to appoint appropriate staff responsibility for each program element. We would support in coordination with future federal grants. If we work together, we have We need more enforcement of parking violations, let's see, crossing guards program, we would love to have some help on that, I'm thinking maybe a volunteer program, but if it was under the city, it would probably be a lot more successful. We can get our seniors and our parents, we could be covered under our school district insurance and I think together we could probably come up with a pretty good plan. Walking school buses are in action, Walk to School Day is in action, other programs, crossing guards, all under our project teams. So what do we need? We would like the city manager to become a single point of contact for us, we would like the city manager to appoint appropriate staff responsibility for each program element, we would support in coordination with future federal grants. If we work together, we have a much better chance of being great candidates for these grants and that could pay for a lot of the infrastructure fixes. Implement a crossing guards program, we really, really need one. We would like future engineering projects to support safe routes to school and last, enforcement of traffic laws. We have a safe routes program here in San Carlos, let's make it better. Thank you for listening.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody council on any questions real quick for the report?
I don't have any questions, I'm just a quick comment though, I, sitting on a BPAC committee and seeing the projects that come before us there, I think a goal that we might have as a city is to have every year, every opportunity we have each year, to have some kind of project where we're looking for funding, grant funding from BPAC that's related to safe routes to school, because I agree with you, we've got a big problem, we've had it for years. I remember, you know, every time I ran for council and walked San Carlos Avenue, I heard from all the homeowners there that that particular road is a problem because of the discontinuous sidewalks, the traffic speed, discontinuous bike lanes, and yet you've got schools at both ends of it and you can't get to those schools. So I hardly knew that we've got some major problems there and so I would think whatever we can do at every opportunity to look for that grant funding from BPAC for pedestrian and bicycle projects that would improve these conditions, we should do it.
All right, just like to thank you for the report. Last time I went to school was a long time ago, this is, maybe someone on staff can speak to it or you can, do cities get involved in the crossing guards? Wouldn't that be a school function?
I've only been, my children are kindergarten and in second grade and most other people I've talked to outside of San Carlos are shocked when they find out that we do not have crossing guards. I know when my daughter was in, my older daughter was in kindergarten, there was a crossing guard at that really dangerous on San Carlos Avenue in front of Arendal, it disappeared, I'm not sure exactly what the story was behind there, why we had one in the beginning. I know, I work at Sequoia Hospital and there's crossing guards right at the intersection of Edgewood, I know, I know Redwood City has crossing guards. I don't know, maybe they know about the other cities nearby.
Yeah, again, I was just curious, not a matter of if they're crossing guards, I've seen them also, I just didn't know under whose direction they were, whether they're a city or a school, that's the question I had.
I know, the ones in Redwood City and the ones in Los Altos are definitely funded by the city completely. I think some, that's why I would like to do something where it's volunteer, maybe we can get some of our seniors out there. Parents, I've talked to several parents that would be happy to do it, but we would definitely need somebody up high to look over the program because we would never want somebody to not show up and then children crossing on their own.
Understand. If I could ask, you know, you indicated there were items in the back that we could pick up, if you could just pick up, I'm so late.
Sure, do you want me to bring them to you?
That'd be great.
No problem.
That'd be great, thank you.
You don't have to do it right the second.
You don't have to do it right the second. Just sometime, sometime before you go, you just drop them off here, it'd be fine.
Oh, okay, sure.
Or you can give them to the city manager and he'll give them to us. Thank you, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
I just have a mechanical question, I see Margaret is here from Traffic and Circulation, is this, I guess I'm looking at the city manager, is this a project that is appropriately housed under that, is this a, how do we start to address this issue?
Well, certainly there are traffic and circulation implications here and so that's why it went through that process before coming here. City engineer has been working with the committee and you'll see within the capital improvement program, some projects that are being considered for funding and so there are some efforts included even within the document tonight that are on point with this project. I mean, crossing guards, many of the things that you're looking at here though, our budget matters and the fiscal implications of establishing those programs are a point of concern for the city at this point, given our budget situation.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
We realize this will be a long duration working, there's a lot of huge problems, expensive problems, we are very happy with starting with small things, you know, zebra striping like San Carlos Avenue, small fixes that would make a great impact and, you know, keep working together, keep applying for the grants, hopefully we'll get grants, but, you know, one of those, start with the small stuff and keep going up as you can.
Well, listen, thank you very much, if you guys just got started last fall, you're making amazing strides, we're with great energy, important awareness, so congratulations to you and everybody that's worked along with you. It's certainly a concern, I think we all get behind in share, we're going to make whatever inroads I think we can based on a dreary budget situation, but as you suggest, which was exactly what I was going to sum it up by saying, is it's a long-term effort and it's worthy effort and I think you've got a lot of support, so we'll continue to keep it on our radar and make headway that we can make and so thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much, I just want to say one more thing, when we had our district-wide Walk to School Day, it was a great event and if you want to YouTube San Carlos, there's like five or six different news clips from different channels that are great to watch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. So we now have a public hearing on item number 9A, consideration of abandoning a variable wide strip of public utilities easement along the southwesterly property line of 85 Hartford Avenue.
I'm assuming members of the council, apparently the subdivision of this area was prepared and recorded, the developer had an idea to bring some of the utilities from the streets along this property line to the rear of the property and that's why they dedicated that easement for public utilities and it was accepted by the city council and recorded. However, over the years, whatever happened, they changed their mind and utilities were not installed in this strip of easement and city did not install any sewer lines or storm drain lines and the homeowner who has requested the abandonment, they sent a letter to all utility companies asking if they have any facilities in there or they have any objection, abandoned them and all the letters was that they don't have any facilities and they don't object to abandonment, abandonment of this strip of land and therefore this strip of easement is not being used for public utilities at all, it has not, has never been used for public utilities, therefore this recommend that the city council that after resolution order abandonment of the easement.
Great, thank you very much, any questions for Mr. Mercari?
I just had one, and it's just for background knowledge for these kinds of things, these people, you know, applied for this, what kind of length of process is this from the time they got to thinking about it, contacted, you had to contact the different utilities and so forth?
The time-consuming part of it is the utility companies responding and that I believe it took somewhere between five to six weeks till they got all the letters from utility companies. The second sort of time-consuming is they have to hire a surveyor, licensed land surveyor, civil engineer to prepare a legal description and plot plan and that usually takes anywhere, depending on the surveyor's schedule, a week or two, as soon as those are done, we'll put on the agenda.
So their total wait on this was?
I believe probably eight weeks from the time they started.
That's not too bad, actually, I thought it might be even more than that. A couple of other questions, if you may, if I might. Seems to me this affects folks' property tax bills because they get a, oftentimes they get a deduction for an easement?
It's very possible, but assessor will not respond to questions like that, they're saying, we don't know, this question has been asked from the assessors, not only abandonment of easement, abandonment of the right of way, so assessor is saying, when we go to assess the property, that's when we assess and we don't know if that's any impact or not, so we don't have the answer to that. We have asked that question.
I just know some property tax bills do have a, there's an exemption line on there for, where you, because you have an easement on your property, you know, they take $7,500 off or something like that.
Absolutely, you're right, but the assessor does not answer that question.
Okay, so this is, so when we do these kinds of things, it doesn't affect what we receive as a city on property tax?
No.
Because it doesn't adjust it? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mercari? With council's question.
I'd like to make motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
I guess I didn't give you a chance to ask if there was anybody in the public to talk, I'm sorry.
That's right, we'll make sure, anybody in the public questioning to address this item? All right, we all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Discussion?
I have approval of resolution number 2008.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, to abandon the easement at 85 Hartford Avenue.
Second. Christine?
Councilmember Grokka?
Yes.
Councilmember Vermont?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. Thank you, and we'll move on to item number 9B, which is also a public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the city of San Carlos cost of services fee schedule. Do we have somebody from the staff? I'd like to.
Seeing that, I'll make a motion.
Hey, there wasn't anyone there.
Seeing that one stand up.
Sorry about that, I forgot that one tonight. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Malp, the city's administrative services director. Before this evening is the city's current services fee schedule. This is something that the city council adopts, updates annually, close to the budget time, we try to do this, we use the fees that are represented in here as part of our estimates for putting together the city's revenue forecast that are, that the budget is based on. Much of this information here, in fact, all the information here has been reviewed by the various departments and service providers throughout the city, vetted by the management team to ensure that they're accurate. Any questions about specific fees, we've got various members of department head here this evening that can talk about what those fees are charged for. This is the type of fee schedule, this is one of the fee schedules that'd be covered by a user fee study that's been proposed as part of the budget, something we need to update every few years, our current fee study is a couple of years old now and it's time to go back out and update that, that these fees are based on. If you've got any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you tonight.
Counsel?
Go ahead, Omar.
Go ahead.
There's pretty consistently through here, it's a 4% fee increase almost all the way through this, but then we get to some items later pages where there's no fee increase proposed at all. Can you give us a reason for that?
Well, I can't give you specific reasons without talking about the specific fees and then perhaps we'd need to bring up a department head, but I know that the methodology behind how the fees are reviewed, you know, there's a component of inflationary, you know, salaries, benefits that the city pays, going up, additional costs to provide those services, there's also a market component and in some of them, some of the fees, the city staff felt that the market component was a more overriding component without more detailed information, the type of information that we'd get from an updated user fee. So that would be just sort of my overview response to that question.
In pursuit to that question, it's engineering, police, and administration, administrative miscellaneous, those are all 0% and everything else is 4%. So those fall under, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we look at the comparable market research on what other fees are in the industry and instances, for example, where we find that our fee is among the highest or near the highest, we might choose not to increase those any higher. Obviously, a new updated user fee study is going to get a little bit more in-depth than it has in the past, as we talked about at the budget study session meeting last time. We want to get into with a consultant hired to do this, a little bit more of the overhead factors of the city and make sure that those are properly built in, but without a proper study to support that, those types of increases in some instances wouldn't be defensible right now.
Okay, thank you. Through the senior? We're talking about the survey, so we'll be revisiting these fees in conjunction with budget like we are doing in some, in some way now, or will we be hitting it sooner because we'll get this survey results sooner?
Typically, this comes forward to the council at this time of year, but because we'll be doing the user fee study, you will see it again, I'm guessing probably sometime in mid to late fall.
Okay, thank you.
So we can, we could review, upon receiving that survey, we could review the fees at that point in time as well?
You'll have the opportunity to review the fees and also the methodology around those fees in much greater detail.
Great, thank you.
And update information.
So just to verify, we're looking at a table here, among them we have current fee, proposed fee, how much you've recommended an increase, and then there's full cost off to the right, is that actually the cost of delivering that particular service? I just want to make certain that we're reading the table correctly.
It's what I would call a very loose estimate of the full cost because, you know, like I said earlier, in past user fee studies that we've done, we've never really made a significant comprehensive attempt to identify what the full cost is, so we're going to, we're going to really want to get into that, but that's sort of our best estimate, but again, we would really need more data before that would be at a fully defensible level in some cases. In other cases, we do have the information and you'll see that the full cost is much closer to what's being proposed.
Okay, so just on the, well, I guess it's the next to the last page of attachments, it's too bad Chief Roethlis is walked out, but there were two fees that I just kind of caught my eye. One was the loud party response, sounds like fun, we're saying it's 158 bucks, but according to this, full cost is 165. And to some extent, you know, I think we can charge loud parties a little bit more, but the other one, and this has been something that I've been talking about since the campaign, the false alarm response here is 100 bucks, we're not changing that according to this. According to your chart, the full cost is $123. I'll pull that out just to say, you know. Mr. Vice Mayor? You attract the fire report, but we're going to go through the fire budget shortly and the fire fee for a false alarm is 544 bucks, so, I wish both of the chiefs were here to say why they're, why they're different, yes, one rolls a truck, another one rolls some police officers, but there ought to be some mesh and some reasonability to say, you know, is it really 100 bucks because here we're saying it's more?
If I can respond to that, with the fire department, you have a company, you know, you've got an engine running out there with three employees, with, usually with the police department, it's one officer, one car, so that's, you can almost apply a multiplier there and see what's happening.
To which I would, understood, but I would also counter, how many companies do we have on call at any point in time and how many officers do we have on patrol?
We have four companies and we have usually three or four officers on patrol sometimes.
So when, when an officer of San Carlos PD responds to a false alarm, that is a third of our patrol staff that is out of service.
Yeah.
And that's, that's significant.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
So.
And again, it's, from my perspective, it's the exact same situation before where you're dealing with a user fee study that these fees are based on, that's several years old and so, you know, in this example, we're probably right up at the top of the user fee study in terms of what the user fee says would be the full cost recovery because it's several years old and we're estimating that, well, we've probably moved beyond that based on the data we're getting from the police department, so I would, I would expect you'd see that number probably not even be 123, but probably go even higher in the next year.
Vice Mayor, resume? I have no comments. Just two real quick, and one's while we're on the police, one is, we have an overtime issue in the police department and so this is just a flat fee though, if we send an officer out on overtime, will we actually pay more for that, does that fee adjust or change?
The fee should include the actual cost, though again, you know, same issue, we're dealing with a data set that's, that's old, but it would include, you know, overtime costs if those are built in and those should be built into a proper user study.
Okay, I guess I would just ask you to take a look at that and make sure overtime costs are, if we're just trying to recover whatever response cost is, at least it should include the full cost, including overtime, from my vantage point. Then the only other question is a, perhaps the greatest discrepancy in full cost versus proposed fee, and that was the use permit, zoning admin.
proposed fee, and that was the use permit, zoning administrator, and the proposed fee is two thousand and eighty-nine, which is, and then the full cost, five thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. I was just curious about why that.
Got a question I can't answer for you?
No.
I don't have a good answer for that either. I mean, when we did the analysis last time, I'm sure the council made a conscious decision that we were only going to recover a certain portion of the fees in that area, you know, so that we were going to allow those to come forward with less than full recovery. But it is something that is at your discretion.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
I can give you a little background on that, being on the council for six or seven years, having visited these a number of times. We have, we did recognize that with past councils, where we were way behind on some of these fees, as Mr. Malpe suggested, in what our cost is versus what we were charging. And it was a little bit like Mr. Grisilli has said in the past, you know, once you get behind, you can't just go pound people over the head and double fees. So what we did was try to make some strides towards, you know, gaining ground, but not do it all in one fell swoop, so.
Thanks for that. I guess from my standpoint, if we're that far behind, I mean, I'm not here, I don't have twelve other of these, this is just the one that I kind of go, zoinks. So I'm just wondering whether or not, hey Janet, Councilwoman Amat, anyway, I just wonder whether or not that one we may want to accelerate. If that's a true cost, it's pretty dramatically out of keeping. I don't know how council feels about that, but if we're going to cut programs, we also need to start to raise the fees in programs that where we know definitive.
Through the Chair, this report we'll be getting in the fall will address these issues, is that, is that right?
That's correct. Though on this particular item, the council could direct staff to amend that fee higher.
But we could, we're going to be, but they will be reviewing this item along with every other item?
Yes.
Sure. I'm just, I'm just wondering whether, if we want to wait six months or not. I personally would propose that this can go up by at least ten percent if we're that far off, if staff feels like that's, those are right and accurate numbers, and start to make some headway on that number. I still don't think it's a, but I would leave that for council.
I would go along with you, let's make some strides towards it. I would also agree with Omar, it's a small amount, but the difference between what we're charging and what it actually costs to go out for a loud party response, let's get it up there. Right now, it's a zero percent increase, so let's go ahead and make the increase and get it up there. And, you know, but a lot of these, I also agree with Mr. Grisilli, we're going to see this in the fall, and it's going to tell us a lot with the report. Here's a couple of areas where we can go ahead and make some changes.
My sentiment is the same, I mean, there's, some of these fees feel out of whack, we should get some, at least start to move them into line.
This particular one, Councilmember Growcut's description dragged my memory, and I do recall the same council meeting and discussions that the councils had previously. The use permit, you know, for example, you can certainly, you know, we have justifiable data behind that, you could choose to raise it by ten percent over what we're proposing here. Some of the other ones, I would caution the council against doing that right now.
Sure. Well, yeah, I mean, for my money, I would just propose start to make a little more headway than four percent on this particular item. So I would say if we took it from two thousand and nine and raised it by ten percent, that'd be another two hundred bucks, it'd be like twenty-two hundred. Again, that's just the.
I don't have a problem with it. What page are you on, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
I am on page three of three, and attachment A.
Attachment A, okay.
So it's our second.
Oh, I see it, I have it, I have it.
It's use permit zoning administrator, it's about the fifth one down.
So you're proposing we go up to twenty-two hundred on that?
Yes.
Sure.
And then if, do you guys want to discuss the police loud party fee? Is that, is that in the false call?
False call.
Is that a fee that's charged to the person that's having the party?
They pony up at the party.
And so, so these two dovetail, it could be a false call if it wasn't loud enough, the police officer charges one neighbor, and if it's too loud, he charges the other neighbor?
Right, yeah, I guess they go out there with their decibel detector, they could have a contest.
And the officer's judgment if it was loud enough to be a nuisance, is that right? Okay.
Through the Chair, getting back to your use permit item, we're already going to charge a three hundred dollar surcharge that isn't included in the fee change. It actually is going to be twenty-three eighty-nine if I'm reading this right?
I'm sorry, it's one?
We have two thousand and eighty-nine, but there's a three hundred dollar plan surcharge that's not included in the increase. They just did the increase on the, on the fee, the current fees.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, this year, it's already twenty-three eighty-nine.
That's correct.
And how long will that surcharge last, Mr. Malpe?
That I don't know, if it's through, I would assume until we've paid off the general plan cost, but, you know, I would say this is going to be around for a number of years before.
Okay, I just wanted, just wanted to point out that we've already even raised three hundred, this is the first increase. We didn't have that last year, the plant, the general plan surcharge, did we?
I think last year was the first year you did have it.
Okay, I apologize, I'm sorry, I thought it was new this year.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
We'd still only be at twenty-five hundred, which is a far cry from.
I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I don't have a problem with raising it ten percent or whatever amount you'd like to raise it.
Okay. Councilwoman Amat, Councilwoman Growcut, do you want to take the lead on the police fee?
Yes, I would just recommend that we, right now, there's zero percent increase on both, the false alarm, it's current fee a hundred dollars, full cost one twenty-three, I think we could go up to the one twenty-three and cover cost. And on the loud party response, it's current fee one fifty-eight, full cost one sixty-five. Again, I think we could raise it seven dollars and, you know, let's go for it.
Okay, so, any other items or questions for staff? Or this is a public hearing, is there, let me open this for public comment on any of these fees or items anybody would like to address, council? We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions for staff or discussion, or will we entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the fee schedule as proposed by staff with the items changed by council being the two police fees and the use permit fee.
Second.
That's a resolution?
Oh, introduce the resolution then.
Adopt the resolution.
Twenty-five what?
Number twenty-five.
Number twenty-five, okay, very good.
And second?
Councilmember Amat?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcut?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we will move from items under number nine to item ten A, discussion of recommended capital project options for fiscal year two thousand and eight and nine.
Evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Jeff Malpe, City's Administrative Services Director. At the city's last council meeting on April twenty-eighth, the council held a budget study session, the annual budget study session, and as happened, as happened last year also, the city council went late, started early, went late, and ran out of time before you had the opportunity to discuss the city's proposed capital budget. So what we wanted to do was bring that back to you this evening, this is a non-action item, so it's really a continuation of our study session, gives you the opportunity to ask questions of staff about specific projects and discuss the proposals amongst yourself. None of these projects proposed in the capital budget have an effect on the city's general fund deficit that we spent so much time discussing at the last meeting. Many of the projects and funds listed within the capital budget are what we call non-general fund funds, such as the sewer fund, which is an enterprise fund, all the revenue generated there by sewer fees for specific purpose of sewer projects and maintaining the sewer collection infrastructure and associated projects. You've got the gas tax and measurery money related to streets and street-related projects. Then of course you have Fund Twenty-Five, which is the city's unrestricted general fund capital project, the city did not budget any money for Capital Twenty-Five, so essentially the money that's in there is just sort of a balance that's been put in in previous years, and the city's manager philosophy in regards to Fund Twenty-Five the last several years is that when we close the books, which is in the fall on the previous fiscal year, any savings that may be generated, he'll bring forward a recommendation to you on how you may move that into one-time spending, such as putting it into Fund Twenty-Five. I believe we moved approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into Fund Twenty-Five last fall when we did this, that the council at the same time authorized some new capital projects. The vast majority of projects shown within the capital budget have been previously authorized by city council, and they're in some stage of being in progress or about to be started. There are a number of new projects being proposed. You've also got Fund Twenty-Seven, which is the parks fund. In past years, when the, when the city has made major, major renovations to some of the parks, the city was in a position to transfer some money from the general fund, Fund Twenty-Five, to Fund Twenty-Seven to help pay for that, but that's where you've got your Measure G funding and your Park and Lou funding. And then in Fund Eighty-Three, we have a whole number of capital projects which are mostly being funded out of the recently issued seven million dollars in RDA bonds. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have to the extent I can about specific projects, and again, myself and a number of the department heads and city manager here to discuss with you any specific projects.
Councilwoman Amat?
Mr. Malpe, I was curious about Sewer Fund Zero, Triple Zero Six. I know we had talked about doing a pump replacement for the sewer system, is that included in the oh-eight, oh-nine budget?
Let me turn that over to Parvise, I believe one of the pump stations is seventy thousand dollars, but Parvise, our Public Works Director, can better answer that.
I'm sorry, are you referring to the San Carlos pump station that pumps to the treatment plant? That is included in the SBSA, Soft Foundation Systems Authority's capital improvement program, and included in San Carlos share, total of San Carlos share for the SBSA capital improvement program, including pump stations, fifty-seven million dollars, and there will be financed by some bonds, and our share of financing of that has not been established exactly, but approximately, we know how much it's going to be next year and following years, city just has to pay the financing, but the SBSA will do all the design and construction.
Got it, thank you. I just remembered, we had that presentation, and it was close to a half million dollars, four hundred and seventy-five thou?
The pump station is approximately ten million dollars, and the rest of it for the city, or city share is forty-seven million.
Right, okay. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Malpe, the, let me, the gas tax fund, there's an interesting bump in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Where did, we go from seven hundred and one thousand to one point one million in operating revenues. And let me just go and get the third question out. Park and Lou, I was curious if a proposed Samtrans building had been included in Parks and Lou?
It is not, Samtrans project, first of all, when it comes to getting building permit, which probably is two years away, that's when we calculate park impact fee, there's no.
So there's nothing there?
Not either.
You didn't get the answer to the second question?
Gas tax question, I wasn't quite following your numbers.
If you look on, it's attachment A, under gas tax fund, operating revenues, the oh-six, oh-seven audited was about seven hundred thousand dollars, but then you look at the oh-seven, oh-eight estimated is one point one million. Then we go back down to about seven hundred thousand.
Why didn't gas tax revenue go up that particular year is the question?
Yes.
Want to talk to that? That was the state. I have to read that number, sorry. It's a fund balance number, it's probably where you're.
Oh, it's capital.
What you're looking at here in terms of the fund balances would be, you know, revenue minus expenses, just showing the balance of the funds in terms of what was coming in. During that year, we, during the difference between the seven, yeah, was the additional, there was additional gas tax revenue that the city received on a one-time basis that hadn't received from the state in previous years. That's how, that's how I recollect it.
Can we do it again? Doesn't look like it.
You know, the state has put a, put a hold on all their gas tax payments for the coming year, and they're going to defer them at this point, so we're already going to get paid late in the coming year.
Oh, bless the Lord.
We hope to be paid at all, so.
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Growcut?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One thing I see absent from any of the projects is, at one time, we did a few pet heads in certain locations, and what we ended up with, they're very nice where we have them, it's the, what I'm talking about is the pet heads, the pedestrian, when you come to a pedestrian crossing, like in San Carlos Avenue, for instance, there's these buttons that you hit, and then there's a counter. And they're very nice projects, City of San Mateo has always approached, again, the BPAC Committee that I sit on, they come at us every year with those projects, and they just slowly pick away at their, at their inventory. And we've got a number of places where we have a certain kind of pet, the newer kind of pet head, you know, for like crossing San Carlos Avenue, but if you're trying to cross Walnut Street, you've got the old pet head. And it would be nice to have a continuation every year of those projects where we just pick them off and bring them all up to date, and get them on counters, and get them on the new buttons. Maybe you could speak to that.
Pedestrian countdown that you're talking about?
Yes.
Crossing San Carlos Avenue, but side of the street, actually, there's no need for that because the time the pedestrians have to cross is much longer on side of the streets because the light goes green, not only for automobiles going through, but for pedestrians as well. So crossing for San Walnot or Laurel and El, pedestrians have more time than pedestrians have to cross San Carlos Avenue because signal upgrades for automobiles. And so actually, those pedestrian heads on side of the street, there is no need for those because as soon as it goes green, pedestrians have the right, and they have more time to cross than they have time to.
Is there a means then to just get the hardware updated at the button where you're pushing, because you've got one kind of button on one side and another kind of button, I need a boost for?
All those buttons, with the new buttons this year, actually, there's sixteen thousand dollars in the existing.
I missed it.
Yeah, it's on the attachment B.
D?
D. It's the traffic signal improvements.
There you go.
What page are you on?
Attachment B, page two of four.
Page two of four, okay.
Page one of four.
One of four.
One of four?
One of four.
Project C ninety-four fifty-six.
Third one down on gas.
I gotcha.
Yeah, that's sixteen thousand dollars, it's just for that, replacing push button turn.
This page? Think I gotcha. Traffic signal improvements, okay, I did not catch that, thank you, all right. And then my next question is that we've got on attachment B, the last page, four of four, the drainage master plan is really, really out there at fiscal year oh-twelve-thirteen. Now, I do remember you said, you know, there was a time where there was a lot of push politically from the community, let's get this drainage plan done, and we were told, well, we want to get some information from somewhere else, another agency that's doing a study, and wait for that. Meanwhile, we've got on page, where did I see the storm drain improvements? Those are, over the same time period, I think we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in storm drain improvements? Excuse me, you know where it is, where is it? Okay, that's on two of four, storm drain improvements, over the same time period, we're going to spend, oh, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but we're not going to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, you know, an overall strategic plan on, master plan on drainage, so.
Correct, one item, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, H. Hill Pride Storm Drain, that was a storm drain that is under houses, there was a litigation, and the city settled for that, and we decided, offered to construct that, so, and next year, next summer, this coming summer, we have to do that, that was based on the settlement of the case. And the other ones, that hundred thousand, there are a lot of curb and gutters that have broken and depressed, and water is not flowing through, and there's ponding of the water everywhere, these are all, all over the city, so we request to see every year with a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, as much as we can to just solve those problems. those problems. As far as drainage master plan, what we said, part of the proposal from the consultants was regarding the creeks, and what to do with the creeks, what people can do in the creeks, and all of that. At the same time, Regional Water Quality Control Board, they're prepared, they mainly the basin plan. Basin plan includes all the watershed, all the creeks throughout the Nine Bay area county. You're going to come with the regulations, how you take care of the creeks, what you should allow property owners to do and not to do in the creeks. So at that time, it didn't make sense for us to prepare at this criteria, and then Regional Board coming with a different criteria. So again, basin plan is being amended. It was supposed to be out in March, but it's not complete yet. We anticipate that that probably will come out the final in August.
So I guess to my council members, if that's the case, if it's going to come out in August, perhaps we can, you know, I know we have to look at it when we get to that budget year, but I don't like seeing it out there until 2012, that we even approached this drainage master plan. I think we need to get to it sooner than that.
Yeah, but...
If possible.
But Regional Board comes out with that, we have, the staff will have a couple of reports for the city council. One will be just about the creeks and what the city should allow the property owners to construct, conduct, constructing the creeks, how to clean the creeks. There's another item coming up regarding remove all of the trash from the creeks. We want to separate that from everything else we want to do to improve the flooding of other areas or remove the properties that are in the flood zone. So those are two different issues, and at least one of them we want to solve based on Regional Water Quality Control Board, basin plan, and the rest of it will have another report to the city council, for city council consideration.
So does that speak to us well enough about having this out there?
From my standpoint, it's good to have a heads up that if that report's coming out in August, that we may change our future plan on it. I think it's a good heads up. I just, and to me, if we don't know, we don't know, and I agree with you that as soon as we should get to it, we should get to it, as soon as we can, we should.
Yes, because there has been, just one more comment. There, you know, there was a lot of political will at one time. You know, people get tired and fade away, but I'm still here, and I'm aware of it, and so.
The gift sport.
No, I was able to ask questions ahead of time, so thank you.
And just a couple of quick ones on future things. So one's about technology, and I see next year we're going to a $400,000 year, and so Jeff, I just wanted to, you know, we don't have to necessarily tack it all tonight, but it seems like a pretty large jump in technology in a tough year for us, and I think it surrounds the Page 2 of 4, and the Attachment B, computer maintenance management systems, and then building permit system upgrade.
Actually, if I may, you're looking at the following year.
I am.
'08-'09 is...
Oh, sorry. Okay. It's a, you know, whether or not, again, we'll invoke Vice Mayor Griselli's thing of rather than do things all in one big chunk, maybe we can, you know, try to mitigate the impact on any given year, so. And it also seems hard two years out to be able to estimate some of those costs, so. Anyway, I saw it sitting on the horizon.
Yeah, so we'll look at what we can do to spread the '09-'10 projects out, if it's possible.
Okay. And then not to get too far into the future, on Park and Lou, we had Heather School Design and Specs way out, like five or six years, and because we've suspended that maintenance agreement, I don't know whether or not that's a, something needs to stay on the books or not, but anyway, again, just reading the whole document. And then the other one is, have, you know, we discussed billing and user fees for, feel for synthetic curth, if you go forward with that, and I don't know if that's reflected in revenue as we go forward, but if, we may want to go ahead and bend that in our future capital budget as well.
Appreciate that feedback.
Hey. And if there's no further questions, we...
Move to the next item.
This is a...
Correction.
Informational.
Is this just informational? Is there any, any direction or emotions?
No, we just wanted your feedback at this point. We'll include this document as revised in the formal budget document in June.
Counselor comfortable? All right. We'll move on to item number 11B. 11A's already been completed. Consideration authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Tramatola LLC for consulting and survey services in connection with a potential city revenue measure.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Council will recall that last December, we asked you to appropriate $50,000 to do a one-time survey of the community to find out their priorities of services and interest in a potential revenue measure to address the city's ongoing general fund budget problems. In February, you heard the mid-year budget report from the city manager and from the administrative services director. You also heard a report from RSG that showed that the city's budget situation was worsening, that over the next five years, we'll have continuing deficits in the general fund. And at that point, you authorized staff to issue an RFP for both survey and consulting services to begin to look at a revenue measure. You also appointed Mayor Lewis and Vice Mayor Griselli to work with staff as a council subcommittee on this topic. In March, we issued an RFP for those services, and we also did some research. And as you'll see in Page 2 of your staff report, we learned a couple of interesting things. And one is that even though up until this point, we've been referring to this as a potential utility user tax measure, several communities that started on the same road that we have, after doing the community survey, learned that the community actually, in those cities, preferred, the residents preferred a different type of revenue measure, namely something like a local sales tax or parcel tax, they radiated those higher than a utility user tax. Indeed, in one city, the resident interest in a UUT was less than 30%. Yes. So one of the things that we're recommending to you tonight is that you recast this as a potential revenue measure, as opposed to being specific to a UUT. We also, looking at other communities, heard a lot about talking to the community about the type of ballot and type of measure, and as those of you who remember the fire measure will recall, that we did hear some concerns from the public about the assessment vehicle, the notion that those votes are public, and so apparently, this is something cities are now polling on as well. We did, as I indicated in the staff report, get eight responses to the RFP. We met with the mayor and the vice mayor and the staff committee, which consisted of myself, the city manager, and the administrative services director. After reading through the eight proposals, that group narrowed it to three. Interviews were conducted and background research was done, and the consensus of the group was to recommend to the full council that we work with the firm of Tramatola LLC. I have spoken with a number of the cities that have worked with this firm in the past. They all speak very highly of their work and strongly recommend that we proceed on that basis. So tonight, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Tramatola LLC. You see a rough draft of the scope of work, as well as the city standard consultant services agreement and their scope of work. What we would suggest at this point is that we proceed only with Phase 1 work, which is the so-called feasibility assessment and the survey. This would include some work by the firm in terms of meeting with the community and basically structuring some meetings about the potential revenue measure and then doing the survey work. I should also mention that Charles Heath from Tramatola LLC is with us tonight, and Mr. Heath can answer questions about their specific approach to this project, as well as other projects of that type. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, and also I'll defer to the mayor and vice mayor, who may have additional comments about this item.
Do you have any additional comments?
No, I, you know, I, with all the items that are coming before us and our budget situation, I think it's prudent for us to look not only at the cuts that we made and will make officially in two weeks, but also to look at the other side of the equation. I don't know, again, we may go out and we find that people, no one wants to raise any money for anything, and that's fine. If that's what we find, that's what we find. But I think sometimes we assume things in government and without asking, and I think that's not necessarily a good, good thing to do, especially when you're looking at revenue enhancement. So I believe that this money will be well spent to the fact that we'll hear back from the community, a cross-section of the community, and get some, hopefully some direction, if there is any direction that they give us. Well, I'm sure they'll give us direction, it's a matter of which way it might go, to identify items that we may want to do in the future.
The only other thing that came up was point information that I don't believe in the report, but I may have overlooked it, and that was, as far as timing of things go, not, I mean, this is a feasibility study, so this is only one step, but a general tax has to go before the voters during a municipal election.
That's correct.
Which is not this election year.
There's one exception, and that is if the council declares a state of fiscal emergency. But assuming that you don't, the mayor's correct, you'd have to go for a general measure next year.
So a two-thirds, a special tax for two-thirds majority can go for in a non-municipal election year, but a general tax, 50 plus 1% cannot. So just, I just thought that was an important, important piece of information. And with that...
I have a question.
Sir Grokka?
Brian, you mentioned the utility tax, you mentioned the sales tax, and one other...
Parcel tax.
Parcel tax. I'm wondering if this group or anybody has discussed, I think it's called a transfer tax upon sale of like a house or something like that, there's a tax that's charged?
Again, that's something we could explore. I think one of the things that I found fascinating in our, our research with the other communities is they spent a lot of time talking to residents about what measure they like, and just to give you some insight, one of the, the most popular tax, to the extent taxes can be popular, was the transient occupancy tax, which you probably recall, we raised a number of years ago, and the theory there is many residents feel, because that's a tax they typically do not pay, they're most inclined there. Because as the council knows, we don't have that many hotel rooms, that's really not an option in this instance. The next popular one, which was a surprise to me frankly, was the local sales tax, which we really haven't talked about. And in talking to the survey consultants, they tell me that the reason for that is, again, similar to the hotel tax, because some of the people who pay the taxes don't live in your community. That is, to the extent you have regional shopping attractions, like a Home Depot or a Best, you know, Best Buy or whatever, some of the increase is not being paid by them. And then the parcel tax is the next most popular, so to speak, which again surprised me, given Proposition 13 and all of that. Apparently, the reason that in some communities, a utility tax is not that popular, and obviously, as the vice mayor indicated, we have to poll our residents to know how they feel, is that apparently some people feel very strongly that utilities are something they depend on, it's sort of a lifeline, and that...
Some of the things I said.
Exactly.
Yes. And also that, you know, it's sometimes, because there are different categories, they apparently can be difficult to explain.
Well, I think it's okay to make this comment. I mean, we're not really on the, you know, we're not here, we're here to discuss this proposal, not the different kinds of taxes, but I'll just take the opportunity to throw in, you know, I'm going to give my reasons when we go into discussion why, you know, how I feel about this, but the reason I bring up the sales transfer tax is because one could argue, we, you know, in San Carlos, property values have pretty much held, we've had a lot of bidding still, we have bidding on homes and so forth, and you might say, well, that's attributed to a good city, good city government, and after all, it's property taxes that pay for all these services. This is just another way of reaching property tax in a roundabout way, you might say. So there could be argument for it.
I was going to say, through the chair, I think the city attorney has got a comment.
Right now, there's a documentary transfer tax that everybody pays on recordation of a deed through the title company. But a transfer tax on real properties, such as you're talking about, I believe is not allowed by statute, state stat, state law. That's why we would have done it a lot, you know, many years ago, if it had been allowed. My understanding, and I can give you a specific site another time, but it's simply not allowed by state law.
Okay.
And again, in this process, if we approve this tonight, for them to do a feasibility study, council members will have a chance to bring up, that the idea is that it's open to discuss what options, just the user utility taxes and option that might be discussed. So if there was something like that, that you, we want to discuss, we should make sure it's in the survey and make sure it's vetted.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions for Mr. Moore, before we have council discussion? Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Grokka like to make some comments?
Okay.
You were just in the discussion, you had more to say?
Yeah, sure. I, myself, I don't feel comfortable with approving this. I know what they, you know, reason for it is, but we just went through cuts, where we cut a lot of services. And to me, it doesn't feel right to then go forward spending $42,000, which is a, you know, a good amount of money. There are a lot of areas where we made cuts to services, and, you know, we were, we were talking about, you know, $3,000 here and $4,000 there and so forth. So we're, on the one hand, we're cutting city services and closing down Kiwanis buildings and things like that, but we're going ahead and spending money to poll our citizens to find out if they want to be taxed or not. I suppose, you know, maybe that's our job as a council. I didn't, when we did the fire measure, we didn't do this, we didn't do a survey, we just went ahead and did the fire measure. I just feel a little uncomfortable. There's, I suppose, other ways to, maybe less scientific, but to find out what people feel about things in the community, and I just don't feel comfortable doing this.
Comments?
I'm going to vote for this, for a couple of reasons. One, I would rather spend some money and do something intelligently than put a measure onto a ballot that absolutely nobody wants and waste city funds in that fashion, too. I think the council does have a responsibility to educate the citizens of what our fiscal situation is. There's two things that have to happen. We have to make our budget absolutely as efficient as it possibly can. I've still appear in, it's in our mission statement that we need a sustainable budget. With the cuts that we have proposed and will make final, we're still not there. I don't know how agreeable to a revenue increase the citizens of San Carlos will be if we have not done our job and put together something that is sustainable. But to that extent, I want to know what the folks of San Carlos feel is appropriate, how they would prefer revenue measures to be put in place, and what we want to do. I think everybody is looking at, you know, Vallejo, it looks like, you know, a body on the side of the road, and there's a chalk outline around it. And frankly, I don't want to be the next victim. So, you know, I think we've seen the iceberg, we're going to hit it in three years, we've got to do something. So I'm going to vote for this thing.
Phil Safely, I agree with Councilmember Grokka. I think it can send, it can send, depending on how it's couched, the wrong message to cut certain things and not, you know, basically, and then turn around and spend money on, on a survey to find out if we want to tax our citizens or not. But having said that, I think that, that shuts the door on, in my opinion, on any kind of revenue enhancement that we could do, echoing what, what Councilmember Ahmad says, we'd be flying blind. The last three measures that have come up before the city have all failed, and I don't think there was any kind of scientific polling, there might have been some seat-of-the-pants polling, gone into that. And I wouldn't be surprised if it comes back and everyone's against all of it, and that lets us know, that puts us right back, you know, in your spot, and I don't have a problem with that. Okay, I've heard it, and then we got to, we got to go down a different path. But I'm just trying to look at every single possibility that, and it's difficult to spend this money, there's no question about it, but I think it's going to be money well spent to have our citizens respond and let us know if they're interested in anything whatsoever or not whatsoever. We hear you loud and clear, and we'll have to go to Plan B. So I can go on both sides on this, but I think I'm going to support, I'm not thinking, I will support this, this measure this evening. But I'm not sure, however, when we get it back, and I want to make sure I say this ahead of time, when we get the results back, that I'll necessarily follow each one that they say, depending on how much, how much the money is and how much we're going to raise and what it would be, because I want to identify all the different amounts to see how much we could raise and how much we really need, so.
And from my standpoint, I echo some of the comments of council, so I see the, some of the strengths of a lot of the different arguments. I think we, we simply have to be aggressively cut costs and so we can meet ultimately a sustainable budget. We also have to aggressively just try to address revenues. And I think every avenue, we have to be, have a complete tactical strategy on every one of those avenues. Keep in mind, we get, we receive 11 cents, but we get 13 cents on the dollar when our property taxes were frozen under Proposition 13. When I say Proposition 13, the 1% tax rate is 1% tax rate, and I'm not talking about any perspective on that whatsoever, but in San Carlos, revenue is frozen at 13%, and we net 11 cents on the dollar, and we have neighboring cities that have to, that twice that amount, that the municipal government gets. government gets. And we're expected to provide the same services as San Mateo, the same services as Redwood City, same services as Foster City, and yet they get double the revenue back from property taxes. Then it's our job to try to provide for the citizens of San Carlos a competitive metropolis, if you will, a competitive city with competitive services to preserve our property values and our public safety. So to that regard, we are in a position where we have to try to raise revenues. And if the, with a survey, if citizens come back and say, look, we understand the issues and we're willing to play a part in that solution, well then, I'd like to know that and I'd like to help lead them to that success. So, and that's where I am on it. And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Chairman Torell C. for consulting and survey services on potential city revenue measure based on the first phase of not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars.
Second. Any more discussion? Christine, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Mirrorless.
Yes. And with that, we will move on to item number 11C, which is a discussion of the city's green programs and climate protection projects, a one-year progress report. And I believe we have a present, thank you very much for being here. Sorry we didn't ask you any hard questions. If only we could. Or we will. I believe we have a presentation within this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You'll probably, or some of you will recall that a year ago, this meeting, we were here to talk about starting a program of green initiatives and climate protection for the city of San Carlos. The city, prior to that time, has been very active in the green arena, but there was a lot of resident interest in this, council interest, and in your August 2006 strategic plan, you asked staff to begin work on developing such a plan. So what I thought we would do tonight is give you a one-year report in effect on where we've been and where we're going. And as I indicated, these are the, sort of the foundational elements of the original plan, the council's strategic goal-setting session in August of 2006, the council discussion in May of 2007 to proceed. As far as things that the city has done prior to 2007, obviously, we worked on energy efficiency lights at city buildings, we retrofitted the HVAC system at city hall, we did an award-winning solar program at Corporation Yard, we were an early adopter of LED traffic signals, and we did some early research on green building permit programs. In the past year, we've had further successes. We've bought hybrid vehicles in both the police and building operations. We've begun work on both the general plan in terms of including climate change in that plan and also energy audits. The youth center was recently certified as the city's first green business, meeting all of those ecological and green standards. We have created a city green website, we have a city green newsletter, we use a listserv with over three hundred members now, and we're also doing a lot of things partnering with other groups and agencies. As you can see, one of the things that's a little unique about our approach to this project versus some of the other communities where we've seen these so-called green ribbon task forces and some rather voluminous reports, is I think early on, we heard from the council that rather than seeing more paperwork, you'd like to see action, and so that's been our focus. I talked early in this process with the Chamber of Commerce, and they were very agreeable to start up a program at their area. Obviously, the San Carlos Green Group, which was a spinout of the Enhancing the City of Good Living Project, was very interested in working with residents, and I've been working very closely with the city staff on city operations in both the green and climate areas. We've also been very active in both regional and statewide partnerships, and as you'll recall, last May, that was something the council not only supported but asked us to become even more aggressive in, and we have done that. Excuse me, we, at the county level, have been working with SBWMA, CCG, and County Recycle Works. At the regional level, we've been working with Joint Venture Silicon Valley. At the Bay Area level, we've been working with both Haybag and the Regional Air Quality Board. And then other groups we've been working with include ICLI and the League of California Cities. Just kind of profile what some of our partners have done. The Chamber of Commerce, they've had two successful e-waste events in San Carlos. They have also formed a chamber green business committee. They publish information in their monthly newsletters every month now in this area. They have what they call the Green Scene, and they also profile some of our leading businesses that are active in this area. And they are discussing increasing business recycling levels. You probably recall from some of our earlier reports from the SBWMA, that this is an area where we are under the state average, not only in San Carlos, but across all twelve agencies in the SBWMA. In San Carlos Green, and members of San Carlos Green are here tonight, so you may hear more detail from them, but some of the things that they have done is they have worked with us on the SolarCity Discount Solar Program. We've had eighteen households that have installed solar over the last year as a result and took advantage of the discount that was arranged. They were very active in the Yahoo Green Pledge Contest, where San Carlos finished first in the state and third in the nation, and we won, as you probably remember, five thousand CFLs and handed those out. They recently have worked with the Eagle Scouts and the Park and Rec Department on some Vista Park renovations, and they provide a lot of good green information to the community through their website, events, and their email list. The SBWMA, which the city, as you know, had a hand in forming over fifteen years ago and up till recently was chairing, is responsible for managing the garbage recycling collection in this community and eleven others, as well as managing the Shoreway facility in San Carlos. One project that we partnered with them on was the battery and cell phone recycling program. You'll remember initially, we started that here in San Carlos at city hall with a partnership with the county. That was then expanded to curb site pickup with SBWMA as a pilot, and we ended up collecting something on the order, five hundred pounds of materials per month, first month, I think it was like eight hundred pounds. And then that program, several months ago, has expanded to all twelve agencies. We've now collected through SBWMA over fifty thousand pounds of these materials. It's been very, very successful. We've seen in the past year, Allied Waste convert all of their heavy diesel equipment to biodiesel fuels, and we've also had a proposal from them. Vice Mayor Griselli was at the ceremony, where the SBWMA has not only talked about upgrading the Shoreway facility to single-stream capable recycling, but also to go to so-called LEED Silver Certification, which is significant because in many proposals that we are looking at, there are proposals to require all municipal buildings to go to that LEED Silver level. So this would be the first, councilmember Grokot was on a committee that had that discussion as well. In terms of the joint venture, Climate Protection for Protection Task Force, this has been a very successful project. I think last year, when we talked to you, it was just forming. Now, all forty-two cities and counties in Silicon Valley belong to this group that meets every other month. They're working together as a team on things. It's garnered statewide and national attention, is a very innovative approach. We are working with that group on a community-wide greenhouse gas inventory. We're just now getting the final numbers, and we're hoping that in the next couple of months, we'll be able to show you those results. And that was done in negotiations with the Bay Area Air Quality Board. They paid for the entire cost of the program, didn't cost San Carlos anything other than some staff time. And also, we worked with ICLI, which is a group out of Oakland that gave us the technical assistance. We're now moving on to the second phase of that effort, which involves a similar city operations greenhouse gas inventory with ICLI. That one is costing us some money. However, the CCG group, the San Mateo County City-County Association of Governments, is contributing sixty-five hundred dollars towards the cost of that particular effort. And that's just starting up now. A joint venture group of tracking policy at the regional and state level, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. They're looking at purchasing pools for various services, audits, and other green-related things that will help the community. We're also working with them on standardized green building code and standards. There has been some activity in individual cities and in Santa Clara County in this area. We're working with both this group and the county to come up with something that's standardized across San Mateo, and also, we're looking at some pilots. The Green Business Program has been another success in San Carlos. As you probably know, for several years, we've been talking to county manager John Malpe and supervisor Mark Church, who appeared before you in January on this program. The county funded it last summer. San Carlos was one of six pilot agencies. The target was to certify three businesses by this summer. San Carlos has already certified twelve, and we have five more that the city has approved and are now in front of the county, so we will have seventeen by next month. We are by far the leader in that category, and we have thirteen more businesses that have applied. I think the significance of this program is that businesses in our community are spending money to conserve water, energy, and do more in recycling. This program does cost them some money, but in the long run, it saves them money. The various utilities are offering them rebates, in some cases, free services such as free LED signs or various sprinkler attachments, et cetera. And the county is scheduling to take this program countywide on July one, and San Carlos has been often cited as the model for how you implement this program. Activities at the state. When we talked to you a year ago, not much was happening at the state. I think it was fair to say that cities and counties in California were leading the parade. I think the state is now slowly starting to show some movement. One of the first things that happened in the last twelve months is that climate change is now a required part of every general plan from this point forward. And as you probably know from the presentations from Community Development Director Al Seve, that is part of the scope of work in our general plan. The state is working on rules that will calculate and clarify how cities are to calculate the so-called nineteen ninety baseline greenhouse gas levels. That work was due in January, they're running a little late, we don't have that yet, but we assume that we'll have it soon, and that will be a guidance in terms of a goalpost to meet. There are over one hundred bills in the state legislature on this topic. We're obviously not tracking them all, but the League of California Cities is doing a fine job of keeping an eye on that area. We talked to you last year about eighty thirty-two. This was legislation that was passed in 2006 to deal with the greenhouse gas and climate change issue at the state level, and it does not, did not initially apply to cities that didn't have utilities. However, the state has discovered, much as I think everyone else has in this area, that to make progress, you have to apply it to everyone, which includes not only residents and businesses, but also the cities and counties. So there are some rules that are coming forth. The draft was due in April, and the final rules were due in June, but much as the nineteen ninety calculations are running late, this, too, is running late. I'm pleased to say that we have been invited by several groups to comment on the draft rules when they come out, again, recognizing that San Carlos, for a city of size, is taking one of the leadership positions in the state in this area. One of the interesting things in this area, by the way, is because, as I'm sure all of you well know, the state has as serious a budget problem as we do right now, they are wrestling with how to apply some of these rules to the business community, residents, and to cities. Normally, they would mandate certain things, but because they don't have any money to pay us for mandates, they are wrestling with how to do this, whether to set general goals and targets, or perhaps to wait for cities to establish their own goals and targets. And frankly, as we'll talk about later in the discussion about the climate change letter, it's one of the reasons that many cities have been reluctant to sign the regular format letter, because obviously, they feel that if they let the state impose the targets rather than adopt them themselves, they'll have a better chance of getting reimbursements down the road. And then finally, as we indicate, the state rules are due in June, but we don't expect to see them then. A quick discussion before I wrap up about what we see in the year ahead. We think that, as I indicated earlier, we'll have the community-wide greenhouse gas inventory for you in a couple of months, if not sooner. We will start work on the greenhouse gas inventory for city operations. We are working, and you may see as soon as your next council meeting, a contract with PMC for the preparation of a climate action plan for San Carlos. This is funded by a seventy-five thousand dollar Bay Area Air Board grant that Deborah Nelson, your planning manager, prepared with Al Seve's work and with some work that I did and some of the other department heads. And that will actually take the climate change work and the greenhouse gas work that we were originally going to do and take it much further than we would have originally been able to do on our own dime. We're going to continue to work with both the joint venture group and with the county on regional green building code and standards. There's been some concern among the different cities that they would like to see a common standard across the county rather than varying standards. Obviously, as you know from our economic development plan, we don't want to be put in a disadvantage by having something more stringent than neighboring cities. We're continuing to work with SBWMA on recycling improvements. We've talked to the council, and the council has agreed to fund a so-called construction demolition ordinance implementation consultant. In looking at other cities such as Hillsborough and Burlingame, we've seen significant increases in their reported diversion rate just by taking that one relatively low-cost step. And the SBWMA staff believes that if San Carlos were to do a similar program, that step alone might take us over the fifty percent target number. We are talking with SBWMA about some additional e-waste events. They may be done in conjunction with the chamber, they may be done with SBWMA. And then in probably June, you will see us come back with a report on the optional yard waste program and the mandatory food scraps proposals that we talked about earlier in the year from Allied Waste. And we're also, as it indicates, we're going to continue to track policy, continue the green business program, and continue to work with the various groups that we've shown. So we think that we've come a long way in the first year in this program. There's a lot more to do. It's almost overwhelming, I would suggest, to try to do this of a city of any size, but particularly a small city of our size, but I think we've done a lot. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have or any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Councilor, questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The e-waste program, what do we know about where this material goes?
My understanding with the SBWMA program is that they do get from the vendor a certification on where the material goes and make sure that it's properly disposed of.
And where's that?
That I don't know. I, in most cases, as I understand it, it's reclaimed typically, like computers and stuff, the circuit boards are disassembled, the chips are recovered, that sort of.
The concern I have is that I've read articles about, you know, these things going on, and then the company's taking in the material, and then they just put it on a cargo ship and ship it off to China or someplace like that. It doesn't have as strict of regulations, and they bury it in the ground, and that's not, you know, doing anybody any good.
Yeah, well, and certainly in the case of the SBWMA programs, there are basically language in the contract that they're not handled in that fashion, but I know the issue that you're referring to.
So we know that that's not going on with the e-waste programs from San Carlos?
The ones that SBWMA cosponsors, yes.
Okay. The second question I had was, a while ago, we did the program where we received all the light bulbs, and we gave them away.
Yes.
I've also read some articles about concerns with those. They may save energy, but they're also laced with mercury, and they can be hazardous if they fall on your garage floor and break. You've got a problem. You have to call up the hazmat team and come clean up your garage. And then the issue comes forward with those of, what are we doing about recycling those, if anything, and educating the public on how to get rid of those? You can't just throw them in the trash, apparently.
That's correct, and we are working on a proposal called Universal Waste, which is actually, there's an RFP on the street through SBWMA, where they will pick up the CFL bulbs. As I understand it, I believe they put them in a cardboard container so they don't break, and then they're picked up. And this program also involves things like picking up needles from, you know, people who take injectable medicine, diabetics, et cetera, and a number of other products. From what I understand in talking to the SBWMA staff, apparently, this type of recycling is sort of specialized, and so what will probably be the case is when we get the RFP responses back, there will be responders, but they won't be the big-name companies you're familiar with like Allied Waste or NorCal, it'll be more specialist firms. But we are working on that.
And then my last comment is, while we have all these programs that, you know, for recycling and so forth, the phones, the batteries, whatnot, at least in the, you know, it's one thing when you have a homeowner that's very conscientious, a homeowner, and for that home, you know, things are probably recycled in the proper, in the proper way. One of the things I see being a renter and living in a building with other people, you open up the recycling bin to throw something away, and you look in there, and there's either garbage in there, or they've recycled, they've put the wrong things in and so forth. I don't know what, so I just, I say that because, you know, when I had a home and it was my own stuff, yeah, I did it properly. But when you live with, in a building with other people, you see instances where people just, they either don't know or they don't care or whatever, and you see the wrong stuff in the wrong bins, and things aren't being recycled in the way that they're, you know, the program's not working as designed. So I guess the question is, what do you do about that?
Well, and the way we work the recycling program allied has a series of what we call recycling coordinators. One is assigned per city, and they are tasked to work with not only businesses but also multi-residential units such as you're describing, councilmember Grokot. And, you know, if you've got a specific, you know, facility, let us know, and we'll have the allied folks work with them. I know in where I live, there are notices in the homeowners' flyers and various signs and things at the containers. And from what I understand in talking to Allied Waste and the SBWMA staff, they've said that in our particular county, and I suspect it's because people are very concerned about this issue and about recycling, that the material that's recycled in San Mateo County and in St. Carlos is quote-unquote cleaner than the average in the Bay Area. So apparently, I mean, it may indeed be an issue in your complex, but apparently it is not as much an issue in this particular county as it is elsewhere in the Bay Area, I'm told.
And also, Mr., through the chair, also, I mean, eventually, hopefully, in the next, when we have the next contract, we'll hopefully go a single stream.
Correct.
Which will alleviate that issue completely.
Yes. Yes, and the single stream, we obviously, as Vice Mayor Griselli indicates, we're going to have to completely rebuild the Shoreway facility, and that's the reason we can't offer it right now. But when we do, the facility will actually become almost like a manufacturing plant. You'll take all the materials, sort them out, clean them, and it's quite an operation.
Counselor, one? I'll express one bit of frustration that comes out when we look at recycling rates at the business level. And something I'd love to address, which is, if you come to any of the businesses that I've ever started or have run right now, there's almost no recycling, and virtually everything we produce is paper. And one of the things that we do is we do confidential shredding. So how do we get confidential shredding to be included into what is being recycled? Because what we're seeing is, you know, you get the big shred bin, you throw your, you know, all your confidential papers in there, which, if you're a startup or a technology firm, or a biotechnology firm, or something else like that, you can't just shred it and put it in the garbage.
Right.
You can't just recycle it. Are there any proposals forward of how we can either account for this in business recycling, or is the next contract coming up going to offer an optional service for confidential recycling?
Interesting question. I can honestly say I don't think anyone's raised that yet, but I will take that one back. What we are doing in the business area, we're working with businesses and offering them bins for cardboard, for paper. You know, part of the reason, frankly, that we've been so aggressive in the green business program is part of that program is to make sure businesses are recycling at a certain level, and we frankly found a couple of businesses that were not through that process. So we are, in some respects, doing this sort of business at a time, perhaps not the most efficient way of doing it, but we are seeing progress. And I think across the SBWMA, I think there's been similar frustration to Councilmember Ahmad's comment. I mean, when we started business recycling, the number went from zero to twenty to twenty-eight percent across the twelve cities, and it's kind of flatlined for a number of years. So I think we've all been kind of scratching our heads about how do we move that line up, and that's one of the reasons I've been very excited about the Chamber of Commerce Green Group saying that's something they want to take on and see if they can move that number up, and I think that would be fantastic.
I just wanted to point out, I saw Cheryl Palmright, CEO of St. Carlos Chamber of Commerce, nodding that her e-waste also is, doesn't just get put on a slow boat to Far East, so you're aware. And, you know, there's also, I've been having some discussions in the community about a community education effort on recycling in general. Obviously, we're single stream coming up. Maybe this will rise into that, but our next two-plus-two meeting, perhaps we'll have a little discussion about that, just see if maybe we actually get a kids' educating adults.
Right, and I should mention, too, to that point, Mayor Lewis, that we have had a couple inquiries from a couple of the schools about doing more in recycling and also about green business certification. And I am talking with the county. Apparently, there are two different green business programs that they're looking at for schools, and so we'll be having some discussions with them about which program to use. In other counties, they are using the A-Bag model, not to say that's what we use here in a number of schools at different levels, from elementary all the way up to universities are very active. And we've had enough interest among parents and students. I always see that happening here as well.
Great, thank you. Well, I have Suzanne Emerson from the St. Carlos Green Task Force that wanted to, is that on the next item or on this item? It's just eleven C. We have eleven C and eleven CI. The next item is the Climate Protection Agreement Letter. So we talked about a slightly longer amount of time than two minutes for you to be able to talk about the activities of St. Carlos Green.
Right, we just didn't know if you wanted that at this point, or if you want this after the discussion of the climate action letter.
And that's your choice. You can speak on it when you'd like to. So either right now, or you can do it after we have the discussion about the Climate Protection Letter. So it's your call.
Okay. It looks like we'll do it after the discussion of the climate action.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll call you back up. Counsel, discussion on this item?
Not yet on CI. You're not talking about the last?
We're not talking about CI yet. This is just item eleven C. Anything before we move on to, are there any other? I mean, the thing that I will say is, from my vantage point, since joining council, this has been something that council has sort of gotten behind. You know, frankly, I thought city staff initially was kind of like, it's like, you want to do what? And yet, there's a ton of citizen involvement and a super-conscious and conscientious bunch of volunteers and awareness in the city. I think staff, you guys are tackling this head-on. I mean, I think that's an amazing amount of progress that we've made, really, what's just a short couple of years. And so I just want to say, I think a lot of people should feel really good about their efforts, and as we all know, they're lifelong, ongoing efforts. But thanks to staff and public and council for everybody getting on top of the stuff, supporting it, and getting out there and getting things done. So congratulations on that. And with that, we'll move on to item number eleven CI, which is a discussion of authorizing the mayor to sign the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Letter or an alternative letter specifically for St. Carlos.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is the other half of the discussion that we had last May. You'll recall that we talked about the so-called U.S. Mayor's Letter, and there were some concerns expressed by the staff and also by the city attorney about this, particularly as it related to the standard letter's language at the end about taking specific actions. And so as we did research on this one, we found that in this county, for example, half the cities have signed the letter and half have not. We had some pretty interesting conversations with some of the cities that pointed out to us that in some cases, the mayor who signed the letter is no longer on the city council, and in some cases, the mayor who signed the letter was at the MLC conference, I guess, when this was first introduced, and they represented that the mayor didn't necessarily have authority, and so they didn't feel it was all that binding. You know, that doesn't quite mesh with how we do things here in St. Carlos. As you know, the tradition that the councils have for many years is we consider, or the council, for that matter, considers items and authorizes the mayor to take an action so it's an official action of your council. And with that in mind, I think at the staff level, we thought, well, we need to take this a little more seriously than maybe some of the other cities that have said, yeah, previous mayor did this, but it doesn't mean anything. We believe in talking to the city attorney, there are some implications here, and therefore what we did is came up with not only the original letter, which is one option for you tonight to sign if you choose, or B is to sign an alternative letter. And what we did in crafting the alternative letter is we talked about what this community has done and what we plan to do, but at the same time, we have taken out items that the city has not necessarily agreed or committed to do, or may have a cost implication. And we're also mindful of the city's general fund problems, and we're also mindful of this issue that I covered earlier about the state mandates. In talking to some of the cities that have not signed the letter, some of them were very consciously making the decision that they would like the state to mandate some of the things on them, so they have a chance of recovering the money rather than having it come out of their own general fund pockets. And we thought, given the city's, this city's financial condition, that's probably something worth discussing. Also, it occurred to us that, in looking at this, you know, we're not going to have our baseline numbers until another couple of months, and we won't have direction from the state a while to what the nineteen ninety number is. So if you sign the original letter, in some respects, you're kind of signing a blank check because you don't know where you're starting and where you're going. So I think that there are some considerations here as far as thinking about whether you want to sign the original letter. There's a certain symbolic value in doing that, but you also have to recognize, I think, you're committing yourself to certain land use changes and certain specific actions that you may or may not wish to do later on when we come back to you with the climate action plan. And just a little bit about the climate action plan, and again, you'll hear more about this, hopefully, as soon as your next meeting. In our discussions with PMC, one of the things that at the staff level we wanted to do is to come up with an action plan, working with the community and the business community, where we recommend to use specific actions that the community can afford and that specific actions that are appropriate to this community. We have noted in our research that in a number of cases, communities who've signed the form letter are much bigger than St. Carlos and have much larger budgets in this area than we do. As I'm sure the council is aware from last year, we budgeted roughly, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars for this entire program. In this coming year, it's not much more because it's part of the baseline budget. So we're not spending a whole lot of money. You know, there are some other communities in this area that are spending anywhere from two hundred thousand to a million dollars a year in this area. That's clearly not our approach to this issue. So staff feels that, obviously, at the end of the day, it is the council's decision whether to sign one of these letters or not sign one at all, or to defer the action until later on when you've had a look at the inventory numbers and the climate action plan. But we would suggest caution in terms of signing the form letter, given that there are certain actions in there that we either may not be able to afford down the road or that we, after we do our statistical research on our action plan, we may not recommend to you. So I guess I would say that we're giving you some options, but we're also issuing you some cautions tonight.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Moore, or we can have discussion?
I guess I would be curious, I mean, if there were some specific cost implementations that you saw or the city attorney saw specifically, which were they?
Under, C two, for example, went right to what is happening right now with G-PAC, which is, quote, "Adopt and enforce land use policies that reduce sprawl for zero open space and create compact, walkable urban communities." I mean, that's part of what is being considered right now by G-PAC. They may or may not come up with a recommendation or to amend the general plan in this way, but the letter says that you will take the following actions. You strive to meet or exceed the Kyoto Protocol by taking the following actions. So that's one. The other was C six, purchase only Energy Star equipment and appliances for city use, period. The third was increase the average, number eight, increase the average fuel efficiency of municipal fleet vehicles, reduce the number of vehicles, launch and employ education program, convert diesel vehicles to biodiesel. Yeah, there's also--
That's a budget consideration.
Yeah, I mean, other budget considerations that we took out of our version of the letter is we took out the language relating to specific changes in the wastewater treatment plant, things such as investing in so-called green tags, getting involved in developing renewable energy, recovering landfill, dealing with methane recovery, trying to think, dealing with increased tree planting, et cetera. I mean, at the end of the day, when we come back to you at the end of the climate action plan, some of these items may indeed be in the action plan. I guess part of what we're saying at staff level, we don't know that yet, but the other is to suggest that you are, in fact, going to take some of these very specific actions is probably premature. And what we thought was that if you do want to issue a climate letter, certainly you can talk about the many things that you have already done and that we do plan to do, very much like the discussion earlier, and you can make a fairly aggressive statement without talking about some of the things that, at the staff level, it's not clear to us today whether you're going to do or not going to do. That's sort of where we are.
So just to get clarification from our city attorney, with regard to C two, at least the way I read AB thirty-two and the requirement for reducing vehicle miles traveled, that's already part of California law that we have to adhere to. Do you read it differently?
Well, we don't have the regulations yet, so we're not technically covered yet, but there are regulations coming. So I think it's not clear yet what this--
Okay, I'm just pulling the experience. I was at A-Bag for, you know, a full day where we were discussing land use policies as a result of AB thirty-two. So I'm reading this going, that's part of AB thirty-two, so it's nothing new.
Well--
And I'm looking at the attorney saying, is this true?
You know, again, you have to adapt this to each community. Is St. Carlos a compact, walkable urban community? I mean, like Midtown Manhattan? No. I mean, it could change your entire general plan. And are you agreeing to do that with this statement? Hedging your bets a little bit and saying, well, we're going to look at, this may be something we'll look at, might be a better way to approach it than say, we're going to do this.
I'm sorry, just to the point, I guess, when I read, taking actions in our own operations communities, such as, it's sort of like, as an example, you know, under this item, it's like, we will strive to, and these kinds of things, such as these types of things. And I guess--
I guess you can read it that way. Someone else could say, including but not limited to. I mean, that's another way to look at it.
But it doesn't say that.
The words are pretty clear. It may include programs such as. I think the mayor is correct. We may or may not do it. It's an example of something we might do. We might not do it. We might find something else to do.
That's, Mr. Lanzon, I was just--
That's all right. I understand.
As a such as, here's some examples, and I was actually pretty, when I read through, I was kind of really happy, like, number eight that we just talked about, it's like, boy, we just, you know, the chief's got a hybrid vehicle, we did, didn't we just do a biodiesel transfer? I mean, I was just reading this going, hey, doing pretty good.
That's right. And actually, in number eight, that's why we included part of it, but not all of it.
I understand.
I think just to build on the mayor's statement, you know, the lead sentence, and C, we will strive to meet or exceed doing actions such as. It's not limited to. So we may take some of these, we may do something that's hopefully more leading. Again, I understand--
That's fine. Your job is turning.
That's the intent.
Right.
I don't see anything wrong with that intent. That's what we were trying to do with the--
Right. With the language.
To clarify that intent without trying to build in--
Well, right, and again, we're presenting you the standard letter. If the council and/or the attorney wants to wordsmith it, certainly we would be comfortable doing that, and indeed, that's something you may wish to do.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question about how this ended up on the agenda.
It ended up on the agenda because when we came to you a year ago, we promised that when we did the one-year report, we'd bring it back.
This letter?
Correct. That was, the council specifically requested that we bring it back at this time, so we did.
That's been under discussion. We've gotten a lot of letters from the community asking for it to come on and, so, in discussion with the city manager, given past discussions, we decided to bring it forward. You don't want to talk about it?
No, I'm just curious, because there's other items I've tried to bring forward, and I've talked to the city manager to put something on the agenda, and what I get is, well, I need two council members, or I need it brought up under council reports, and then under council reports, if, for instance, if a council member says, oh, I want to consider the Kyoto letter, and another council member said, yeah, I think that's a good idea, and we discuss it as a council, and we have enough consensus to put it then on the agenda, then it ends up on the agenda. I've just found struggles in the past trying to, as one council member, trying to get anything on the agenda, and then, you know, I know, because of the one year I was mayor, I was asked by the Sierra Club to put this on the agenda, and, you know, I wasn't too interested in it and didn't take it any further. I guess I could have, but I didn't. And so I was just, you know, I'm curious because of experience trying to get things on the agenda in the past, so forth, and then this thing keeps coming at us, and now finally here it is. So I was just curious how it ended up here.
Okay.
Well, again, it was staff's impression from looking at the minutes from last time. That was the council's wish, but perhaps we were in error.
Okay. If there's no other questions for Mr. Moore, we have a speaker from St. Carlos Green Task Force who would like to come up and give a short presentation.
We're going to first have a little discussion of the climate action letter, and then we're going to talk about some of the other items from St. Carlos Green. So we're just going to reorder ourselves if that's okay with you.
Great, thank you. Julie Willard.
Hi.
Hi.
Members of the council, Honorable Mayor, thank you for including climate action and St. Carlos Green on the agenda. I'm a middle school science teacher. I'm also the climate action co-chair for St. Carlos Green. I'm also the Climate Action Co-Chair for San Carlos Green. And I'd like to speak to three items tonight. The first, as you know, is support in our community for immediate action on climate change in San Carlos. I have copies here of all of the letters that you all have received from the various groups in our community, including the Chamber of Commerce, League of Conservation Voters, the Congregational Church, and the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association, formerly known as L'Oreola, as well as a petition signed by 150 community members. I don't actually have that in my hands, but we do have that for you. These letters and the petition are asking for action now by San Carlos rather than waiting for the state to follow through on their mandates. Secondly, while we appreciate the attention that's being given to this issue, the suggestions for how to move forward in terms of the alternative climate action letter by city staff are not concrete, and they do not require any specific action by the city. Given the urgency of the issue and the impacts of climate change at the local level and the obvious groundswell of community support that we have, San Carlos Green and the community members are advocating for the city to take concrete steps now, building on the experience of a myriad other cities that are ahead of us, San Carlos, in this endeavor, including San Mateo, Palo Alto, San Jose, and Menlo Park, who are all developing or have developed climate action plans. Specifically, we're calling on the city to immediately establish a task force that includes community members, San Carlos Green, and city staff to develop a community-wide climate action plan. We heard about the firm that is being considered for hire. We would really like to have community members very much involved in that process. And we want to keep the climate action plan separate from the general plan. Keeping it separate allows many steps to be taken now by the city independent of the general plan process. And it also allows the city to draw on the high level of expertise that we have in our community, who are ready, willing, and able to give energy to this process. Our advocacy is to begin the climate action plan now and sign the mayor's climate protection agreement as it is, in its original form. In addition, it's critical that the climate action plan include ways to reduce both municipal and community-wide emissions, because municipal emissions are only 3% of our total community's emissions. So we have a lot of emissions that are not just coming from our municipal sources. And the last thing is that San Carlos Green would like specific information and documents to show what action the city is taking regarding a $75,000 Bay Area Air Quality Management District grant. We've heard about how it's going to be used. There's a one-year timeline for action on this grant, and that's about half over. As of yet, San Carlos Green has not been able to get any information on the status of the grant, although we've repeatedly attempted to do so. So I appreciate your time. We obviously have several people who are here in support of this, and I think there's a few community members out there as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Emerson.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Emerson, a San Carlos resident and a member of the San Carlos Green Task Force. I just wanted to very briefly give you a little history on San Carlos Green Task Force. In 2006, the city set up the Natural Resources Task Force to tell the city what the residents want regarding this environmental stuff. And it's sort of a broad, but not specifically geared as that directed to them. And so we put together this big report. But instead of just ending there, a group of us wanted to continue forward, and so we came to the city council and asked to proceed forward as an ongoing task force. And so that group was the Conservation and Resource Management subgroup of the Natural Resources Task Force. And we were given the okay by the city to proceed, but we changed our name because we thought San Carlos Green was a lot easier to remember. So just to provide that background. I wanted to make a few comments this evening about green building programs. We've been working, San Carlos Green has been working for the last several months on coordinating on educational efforts regarding green building programs. We're working with the folks at Recycle Works on helping to provide content for their green building workshops and helping to publicize them within San Carlos. We've recently installed green building materials on one portion of a kiosk here in City Hall Lobby, so we encourage you to check that out. And we've got a draft of a webpage that we're hoping to get launched in the next several months, providing primarily just links to other great local resources for green building information. And this is all very important in order to bring the local builders and the local residents up to speed on green building policies, techniques, and materials before any requirement of green building might go into effect. So the one thing that we request that be the next step would be having the Planning and Building Department start to require a green building checklist to be filled out as part of the permit application for new construction or major remodels. We are not suggesting that any particular number of points be required at this time. At this point, we simply recommend that people have to read the form, put some checkmarks wherever is appropriate on the form, and sign at the bottom. It's an educational process that helps to bring everybody up to speed and to develop that communication between the residents and the builders about green building policies and techniques. I have some examples of green building checklists that I can provide to you here, and that's all I have to say about green building tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, counsel, discussion? If you hurry.
My name is Ann Iverson from the San Carlos Green Task Force, and I just wanted to tell you about some of the more, the fun stuff that we've been working on, just to give you a quick update. You've heard about Vista Park, and it's been one of our more successful projects, primarily because we've been collaborating with the city park and rec department. We've had a lot of help from Gachino Landscape Management, extraordinary amount of help, and participation from more than 65 individual citizens in this city. We have finished landscaping the upper landscaped area. We're working on restoration of the meadow down below the landscaped area, and we're putting together interpretive signage for the park. And some of you might know that Channel 11 has been broadcasting the weather there on Monday mornings, and they've mentioned the park in the news. And we have scheduled a ribbon cutting and media event on June 16th, led by Mayor Lewis. So we're really excited about that. So we encourage everyone to join us for that. Secondly, another project I'd like to mention is a recycling program that's taking place at the Charter Learning Center and Terralinda School. This is in cooperation with Allied Waste. One of the results is they've gone from four of the large recycling mixed paper bins to eight. So they've essentially doubled their mixed paper recycling, just in just a few short, you know, like maybe a month. One of the most impressive things about this project is that the Charter fourth graders have taken charge. They are manning the recycle bins at lunch and at recess, educating the students, and effectively changing behaviors. So we really are excited about this project as a model for other schools around the city. And one of our goals is to get other parents involved and to start these programs with other schools. And I know the mayor's been, seen a few emails from him regarding this. We will be renewing our efforts in the tree canopy area. This is one of the most effective ways to achieve goals in reducing carbon footprint. So we're working on a few of those projects. You're all familiar with the food waste program that Pat Potter's working on, and so I don't need to tell you much more about that. Briefly, we've distributed hundreds of low-flow showerheads, faucet attachments, hose nozzles, reusable shopping bags, et cetera, et cetera. I just think we're touching the community in many, many ways. We've won a recent excellence in business award from SANSITA. We have a member on the general plan update, a member on the Green Committee, and feel that in one year that we've made a lot of progress. So I also have a handout that gives a little more in depth of what we've been up to. But I can leave.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, discussion about the letter. Ms. McGrocott, you want to start?
I'd like to hear from other council members first.
You know, the difficulty, I have two things. Number one, it's always difficult for me, and again, two and a half years up here. It's always hard for me to, should we say, endorse something that doesn't specifically relate to our city. And of course, this does relate to our city, it's just that it comes from another venue. We didn't develop it, it came from another place. Having said that, and, you know, reading over all these pages that we had, and I have read them all over, I would probably be in support of the alternative climate letter for San Carlos. I think it speaks to the fact of what we want to do. It speaks to the fact of that we want to, we've already done, as evidenced by tonight, both on the, by Mr. Mora's comments and by the folks that have spoken at the podium, done an awful lot of stuff in probably just a little over a year. And I don't know, I guess I just feel that we need to make sure that we can accomplish what we say we're going to. The last thing I want to do is say, we're going to do X, and then someone will come back later and say, you didn't do X. And I want to make sure we're able to do it. I want to make attainable goals that we can attain. And so I would be in support of the alternative climate letter for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, my viewpoint is a little bit different. I absolutely want to set goals that the city can succeed at, but I also recognize that there's a point of setting goals that we need to achieve. And I believe that the Kyoto Protocol has been endorsed by a number of countries, has been endorsed by a number of, by a number of cities in the United States who have said this is something that is important and something that we ought to do. I don't have a problem with what's going on there. I'm looking, I think it was enough that actually also, the state of California also passed AB 32. So a number of the points in here that are listed as, we may have to be concerned about this, I think we're going to catch it in the teeth from AB 32, and it's going to be coming from Sacramento directly. So I don't see any problem with this. I'd like to support it, and my preference would be that we sign the U.S. Mayor's letter.
Ms. McGrocott?
Well, I've said this before, so I'll just be repeating myself, but both these letters, whether it's the first one or the alternative, talks about global warming, and I am not buying the science. I think it's a total lie, and there's enough other scientists out there who would support that statement, although, of course, there's a lot of scientists, you know, we're told that are on the side of global warming is happening, it's caused by man, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I just heard on the news the other day about us going into a 35-year global cooling because of the oceans and the currents in the oceans and things going on there. And we have got no control over that. So anytime these things come across and they talk about global warming, I'm just going to be opposed to it. I'm not going to buy onto what I consider to be a lie. That said, you're correct, Mr. Brusili, we've done quite a bit as a city, and I applaud those efforts. I come from a background, growing up as a kid with family, parents that went through depression. We saved every darn thing there was in the house. Talk about recycling things, you know, we couldn't throw away a screw or a nail. And I also grew up in an area where, in Akron, Ohio, area where pollution was terrible, the Kailaha River, you could nearly walk across the thing because it was so polluted. Lake Erie, the bay, at Lake Erie, at the port of Cleveland, you could, same thing, you could just about walk across it, it was so polluted. You know, the Akron tire companies, Goodyear, Goodrich, Firestone, polluted the air. I remember going out in the summertime, and the sky was brown, and the air smelled because of the pollution. Did we need to do something to clean up the environment? You betcha. We see it in the Bay Area around here, that sometimes you have smog. I also lived in the Denver area for a while. They had inversion, they had smog. Is it a problem? Yes, it is. Have we done things to change it? Yes, we have. Should we continue to do so? Yes, we should. Should we do it under the umbrella of a lie? I don't think so. I think we can do it honestly, and I think there's a lot of things that we ought to be doing, but we shouldn't be doing under a lie. And I think the whole Kyoto letter and its emphasis of, you know, let's do this because of global warming is just wrong. And so I would suggest that we don't sign onto it. And again, I think as a city, we've got a bunch of good citizens who do a lot in this area of trying to, you know, recycle, cut down on pollution, drive their cars less, ride their bikes more, walk to school, so forth. We saw, you know, the thing about safe routes to school. To me, it's all about quality of life and just kind of doing the right thing because it's the right thing to do. But to do it under this thing of, you know, global warming, no, thank you, I won't sign onto it.
Mr. Mayor, I just got to push back a little bit here for a second. I can absolutely stand with Councilman McGrocott if he wants to disagree, but to interpret the data as a lie is a pretty tough statement.
It is, and I will hold to it. I will not back off of that statement. I've said it from this podium a number of times, and I will not back off of it.
I'll leave it there.
Well, from my standpoint, I mean, it's a little bit difficult tonight, and maybe we can, we'll try to move ahead. I actually feel comfortable signing the mayor's letter on the agreement here. But that being said, we've got four council members here tonight, and we've got just two of us so far that are in favor of that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, again, I never want to postpone, unfortunately, Councilmember Royce could not be with us tonight. I'd be more than willing, I know the next meeting we have is the budget meeting. I beg your pardon, I'm looking at the manager's screen.
No, I mean, the budget meeting will not be the next meeting. We will do a study session. The primary agenda item for the next meeting will be a study session on the G-PAC process.
Okay, will we have time, would we, okay, let me rephrase then. Would we have time to discuss this item at the next meeting?
I believe so.
Okay. I mean, the only reason I say that is appears it's going to be two to two whether to sign the mayor's letter, unless someone wants to come and vote the alternative one. So I'd be more than willing to say that we postpone this until we, the next meeting, and then Ms. Councilmember Royce would be the, I'm sure, will have the, unless he decides to vote for the alternative letter. But again, there's that, I mean, it could, but at least have his input, and perhaps that would change the voting.
Yeah, the only option I was going to throw out there is, I certainly would also agree to the alternate letter, and we could move forward on the alternate letter tonight, and then perhaps we can bring it back if Councilmember Royce is interested in bringing the issue back.
Well, whatever you want to do, I was just trying to, it sounded like both of you were on one side, and if you want to compromise on the, and I don't mean to come to my side, but I'm just saying--
The option, yeah.
I don't know what the other council members want to do.
My preference is for the U.S. Mayor's letter. I'd be happy to move to table. Okay, till next meeting, bring it back. Yeah, so move to table as to--
We need official motion to table, or just bring it back the next time?
I'm sorry?
Just direction.
So, yeah, so staff, you can just bring it back.
We have a full house. I assume all of us will be here at the next council meeting, so I just, God willing. God willing.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And we will now move on to item number 11D, which is consideration of resolution adopting fiscal year 2009 Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department budget.
Mayor, members of the city council, the process with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department now is for the department to consider its budget for the fiscal year, bring it to each of the member agencies for approval, and then for the fire board to actually act upon the budget once both member agencies have approved the document for you. The document that is before you this evening is the FY 09 Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department budget. It is a budget of $14,640,685. Our assessment is $6,95,555. The formula and how that number was arrived at is included within the packet. I should indicate that this is an increase of about 8.9% over last year. That's not to be unexpected. It is not showing an increase in terms of programs or activities within the fire department by and large. They are trying to establish some reserves, but as you will recall, last year's budget from the fire department did not fully fund some positions, did utilize some reserves, and had two years of revenues in it. And moving forward, we will only have a single year's revenue reflected within their budget. So last year's budget, I don't think was, you know, a sustainable, truly reflective of what-- of what it costs to provide services for the department. This budget, as represented by the fire chief, is, you know, it's a frugal status quo document, not intended to expand the services, but rather to get the department on firm financial footing moving forward for the current level of services that it provides. With that, we've provided a summary in the report for items that are contained within the document, including full funding for the Gatsby 45 Retirement Medical Obligation, which we believe is the prudent thing to do if revenues are available. The chief is in the audience this evening. If you have any questions specific to this document, or if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to try to address them as well.
Fire Board members like to say anything before we launch into this document?
No, I would say, I would fully agree with the comments of the city manager. I did want to point out that I think that the chief was creative in his use of the monies that he did have. And for instance, as an example, one of the things, we had some savings in an area of workman's comp, and then what we did was pre-funded payments due, which actually saves us money in the long run when we do that on some of these programs, so.
I would just speak to the fact that the fire department and its employees have gone out and gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants for new equipment. I think it's over, what, $400,000, Chief, or $500,000 amounts of money. They've been a partner in this situation with the cities of Belmont and San Carlos. Belmont, our other partner, has been very supportive of what we're trying to do. We're working well together. I think it's a situation where, as Councilmember Grocott and I came on two years ago to the board, our whole point was to make sure that we had the best fire service that we could have, and to set up in a businesslike manner, and that's what this budget is doing. As the city manager indicated, we're not expanding the program, but we're setting up prudent reserves so that when we need to go out and get a new vehicle, we may not be able to get that grant that we got this year, but we'll have money sitting in there that we can go out and do. Same thing with Gatsby 45 and our other issues. And we actually end up the year with a couple of, maybe $100,000, $150,000 in the bank, which is an amazing concept relative to this agency, which didn't happen, as I understand it, for many, many years. We're not trying to build up millions and millions of dollars of reserves, but we are trying to do prudently so that in the fact of doing all this equipment and all these other things that we need to do, we have the monies to do them. So I know the fire boards worked really hard, the city of Belmont, ourselves, and especially the people in the fire department, have contributed, along with obviously the chief and his staff, and staff over at Belmont who does the finances, to make this thing all come together. So I think it's a prudent budget, and I think it's something that we should positively accept.
Councilmember Ramon?
Got just a couple of quick questions. I'll hit you all at once, then let you come back. I'm looking at Appendix 3, pages 11 and 12. The 2009 budget shows that you've cut overtime in half. So I just wanted to get a question on that. Number two, there's $351,000 for benefits, I believe that's line item number 8281, and I'm assuming that's the funding of Gatsby.
$351,000?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that'd be Gatsby 45.
Great. And then the other line that I had was 8639, which is fuel. You've been, 2007 was about 50K, 2008 you're coming in at about 50K, 2009 you're getting about a 10% bump. We know that fuel prices have gone up. Can you talk to that? So again, cutting out overtime in half and fuel price, do you expect it to stay in about 10%?
I'll just address the fuel cost real quick. Just based on information from the carp yard, the mechanics that are there, they told us to really look at about a 15% increase in fuel costs. I kept it around 10, thinking that we could probably control it a little bit, and that with the new fleet that's coming in in the fall, they're a little more energy efficient. They'll burn biodiesel, they reburn, they have their, they meet the new '07 standards for smog production, and so they do a lot of re-burning of the fuel and the excess carbon that's in there. So I'm anticipating we're getting a little bit of fuel economy and activity with some of the fleet. So really not knowing where diesel's going to go, I had to kind of throw it, kind of throw a number out there, and I thought 10% was probably an appropriate number at this point.
You might want to clarify, those are horse-drawn engines, the replacements, so...
True. There's another kind of horsepower there then, I think. In regards to the overtime, if you'll notice, there's two overtime numbers. There's 8111 overtime for $600,000, a couple of hours, right below salaries, so assuming you're looking at the...
Yes, sir, 8111 was the number that I was looking at.
It has $600,093, $600,093 for 8111.
I got 628, 214.
Okay. You have the more current one, but okay, we're close.
Okay.
If you go down a couple of numbers to 8115, there's constant staffing overtime.
Got it.
And so what we did was, with some of the new staffing things that we have in place, is we really wanted, at the board's request, we really wanted to be able to pinpoint the costs for unexpected absences and planned absences, vacation, floating holiday, those types of things which the employees are entitled to. That would be considered the constant staffing overtime. And the straight overtime would be the disability, sick leave, those types of thing, unplanned events, that we could kind of get, you know, kind of say, nothing's really costing us to have, when people are injured, versus just an overall blanket, $1.2 or $3 million in overtime. So we split it under the new program this year to try and give us a better idea of what the overtime, actual overtime costs are.
Great, that helps a lot.
May I just add one point to that? One of the reasons we asked the staff to do that is because we're also, at some point, going to be looking at options or recommendations from the staff for possibly cross-staffing at the downtown station, because that's where we have the truck and the engine. Or we don't have the engine staff, that's the thing, is, that's why you see the truck going out of there all the time, you never see an engine go out of there. So we want to look at cross-staffing as an option. In order to do that, that's why we're looking at the overtime issue, to see if, you know, what would be the impact if we hired some more employees? Of course, more employees are more, it's more expensive because you're paying the benefits and so forth. Whereas when you just use somebody, when you keep your staff really lean, and then you pay for overtime, you know, the guys generally welcome it, true chief, if it's not, you know, overly used, and it costs you less money because you're paying for those hours, but you're already paying the benefits. So it's, you know, we're balancing that, and that's why we're looking at it.
Good, one more question, which is, I had asked earlier this morning the percentage of calls that were medically related. And I guess I just want to put this out as an issue that I'd like addressed at some point, which is, can you go ahead and just say, what was the percentage of calls that are medical?
63%.
So given that, I mean, I came from Florida where I was an EMT, and here, when there's a medical call, we roll a truck or an engine, and a full company goes out to that call. That is completely new to me, at least in terms of how, what my experience matches when I work in emergency rooms or when I rode in the ambulances. I guess if we're looking at the majority of our calls being medically related, is the most efficient way of delivering that service by rolling a truck and taking a company out of service. And I'll throw that out as just, it's an area of concern. I know it's something we're not going to delve into or discuss tonight, but it's something I would like to dive into and say, does that make efficient sense?
Well, and I could get back with you on more information on that, but that is part of the agreement that's with the existing ALS agreement with the county, that they were able to reduce the amount of ambulances that they have on the street by us increasing the amount of fire paramedics on the engine companies, which put paramedics at 52 stations instead of 15 locations for the county on an ambulance. And we are actually recouping a percentage of that cost. Each agency is getting reimbursed for the paramedic on the engine company. But the idea is closest unit response, cuts down response times, gives the community actually better response time for the...
Yeah, just to buttress that, as you mentioned, Chief, I mean, we've got four stations here. These guys roll out of here in, was it five, less than five minutes, they're going to be wherever we are. Where's the ambulance parked? I don't see one at the corner. I mean, I'm not criticizing, I don't see one at the corner, so if it's not at the corner, where's it going to come from? I don't know where it's coming from. But I don't see it, I don't see it where the fire stations are. So I'm looking at it from an issue of time and being able to get to the issue, or get to the folks.
Point well taken, but I think I'm, the point that I wanted to make was, if, you know, we're coming close to two-thirds of our calls are medical-related, then does rolling a truck with a full company make sense? And that's something I'd like to explore as we move forward.
Be happy to give you more information on a future date.
Well, no, I just have a couple of quick questions, and not to delay things too much, but I was just trying to, you know, going through it, just makes sense of big numbers, so I'm sure you'll quickly straighten me out on this. But I saw a missus in tab 500 Vehicle Replacement Area, and it looks like it jumps from a $210,000 line item to over $1 million in, you know, to fiscal year 2009. So I was just trying to read the detail on it, and on the, it said engine number one on page 24, and I didn't see an engine number one listed, so I wasn't sure with that.
Probably engine 14, but of the two engines, one, the first engine is the grant engine, and the second engine will be coming here into San Carlos. Each community will be getting an engine company. We purchased two engines in, within this fiscal year, or would be taking delivery of them. This is the lease, the $1.0, you know, $1 million, $40,000 is roughly the lease cost of money that we'll be dealing with in regards to the engine companies. If you look on that, if you look on the, if you look at the vehicles, you have two vehicles, one for $528,000, one 19, and the other one for $511,000?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the cost of the vehicles coming to us, fully equipped.
And then, didn't we, I'm sorry, I was only pushing, we had grant dollars that offset that?
That is, that's in there. And that's on the other side, if you go to the revenue side on a different page, it will show the $325,000 in there as a payment towards the lease. So actually, on the, if you look in the budget under a different section under leases, it'll show a lease of about $700 and something thousand dollars.
I see. And will we be able to make any more headway, do you think, grant-wise, on that second vehicle?
No. A grant for a vehicle typically is one. You can get one, it's one. So we're, the one advantage we did by going after the second vehicle was we were able to reduce costs, and we completely caught up our fleet replacement in one blast, essentially.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just real quick, the $210,000 is the annual amount we put into the...
Vehicle Replacement Reserve.
...to cover the lease costs and some light vehicle replacement.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council?
So with consideration, we want adoption, motion for adoption?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution. Is there a number for this?
27.
27, ratifying the fiscal year 2009 Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department Revenue and Appropriations Budget.
Second.
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And with that, that's our last item on the agenda.
12A, 12.
No, you're regrouped, regrouped, agency.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl's been here all night. 12A, I thought you were just here to hear our engrossing comments. Consideration of 2007-8 Economic Development Contract and Economic Development Special Projects Contract Addendum with San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, and this is a redevelopment agency item. We are now directors, how does it feel? Oh, boy.
Evening, honorable Chairman and Agency Board of Directors. Mark Suiki, Economic Development and Housing Manager, presenting this item tonight for your consideration and to answer any questions you may have as you... Cheryl Pomerank is here, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, who can also answer any questions you may have on these contracts. Staff is recommending that the Agency Board of Directors adopt a resolution to approve the contract with the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services and the Economic Development Special Projects Contract Addendum for fiscal year 2007-08 in the form attached to your staff report, and to authorize the Executive Director to execute the agreement for services. Since 1986, the agency has had a successful partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, contracting for specific economic development services. These have included producing an economic profile of the city, quarterly retail review, holiday brochure, Doing Business in San Carlos brochure, promotion of the farmer's market in downtown, managing downtown parking permit program, special projects such as servicing the banners on El Camino and Laurel Street, and the downtown tree lighting, plus the staffing and costs to provide business development and information to individuals and businesses seeking to locate here. Approval of the two proposed economic development agreements will cost the redevelopment agency a total of $70,518. These funds are available in the agency operating budget to pay for the proposed contract. No additional budget appropriations are required by the Agency Board to approve this agreement, and there's no general fund impact. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Council? Any questions for Mr. Suiki? No? Nope. Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the contract proposed in the staff report with the Chamber of Commerce for economic development.
Second. Christine?
Director Ramon?
Yes.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
And Chairman Lewis.
I'm sorry?
Chairman...
Chairman Lewis, yes.
Chairman Lewis.
Don't hear that that often.
Chair.
Through the chip.
Wasn't that a resolution again?
Yes.
Oh.
RDA number 151.
All right, great. Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.